Good morning. I am calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. I am the Chair of this committee. And we are joined today by Councilmembers Gordon Reich, Council President Johnson, Councilmember Andrew Johnson, and Councilmembers Yang Quincy Goodman Frye and Palmasano. We are a quorum of this committee. So we have two items on our agenda for today. Both of these items are very significant items, and so we have planned that we will have a longer-than-usual meeting of the Committee of the Whole in anticipation of the magnitude of these items. The first item is a report from the Workplace Regulations Partnership Group. To give a little bit of background on this issue, the city in 2015, both through the mayor's state of the city, as well as through an accompanying resolution adopted by the city council shortly after that in April of 2015, had indicated a desire to work on a number of workplace policies and to explore those issues. And this was in recognition of the city's history of supporting policies that created fair, safe, and healthy standards for working people and our desire to look at how we might take that work further. The issues we talked about in 2015 included earned sick time, fair scheduling, preventing wage theft, and exploring economic impacts around increasing living wages. In the fall of 2015, the council determined to focus on getting an ordinance proposal relating or a proposal relating to earned sick time, and also at that time adopted a resolution that was made on a motion of Council President Barbara Johnson, as well as Councilmember Andrew Johnson, to form a Workplace Regulations Partnership Group. Since that time, I just want to say we are here to hear the product of that work group. But this has just been a tremendous amount of work that has come forward from a group of volunteers that represented a broad spectrum of employee and worker and worker advocacy organization and labor, as well as businesses, small and large, and business associations coming together to express their opinions in that group. We're going to hear about their process. They had a lot of work that they did together in terms of listening sessions that happened all around the city, and then a very large number of business meetings where they engaged in passionate but really respectful conversation. I came into those meetings many times, and I was just amazed at both how people were able to very firmly express their ideas but do so in a respectful way. I wanted just to take a moment because I will tell you, as we kind of get through the presentation and get into discussion, sometimes these moments are lost, to say a thank you to people who have spent so much time working on these issues. And so I wanted to read through the names of the workplace partnership members. And truthfully, it's hard to express how much work these folks did in a very compressed timeframe. So they really gave a lot of their time. And we are also presenting the workplace partnership members with some certificates from the city of Minneapolis, just as a way to express our appreciation for truly the large amount of work that you did and the product that you are giving to us today. So the list that I have includes members Susie Brown, who was representing a business association, the Minnesota Council of Nonprofits; Steve Kramer, representing a business association, the Minneapolis Downtown Council; Faisal Hamud, who is an employer with his business Optima Health; Liz Doyle, an employee representative from Take Action Minnesota; Brian Elliott, representing Organized Labor with the Service Employees International Union; Dana Frank, who is an employer and her business is First Avenue; Molly Glasgow, with a business association, which is Twin Cities Metro IBA; Chelsea Globitz, who is with Organized Labor, representing Minneapolis Regional Labor Federation; Ron Harris, who is an employee representative, representing Neighborhoods Organizing for Change; Tony Lacroix, who is with an employer, Abbott Northwestern Hospital; Guillermo Alexander Lindsay, who is an employee representative, and he is also connected with Centro de Trabajadores Unidos en Lucha; Wade Lunberg, who is with Organized Labor, representing Unite Here Local 17; Christopher Pennick, who is an employee representative, working for a business called Zero Rex, Zero Res, excuse me, of Minnesota; Jen Rouda, who is an employer representative with Target Incorporated; Danny Schwartzman, who is an employer representative, his business is Common Roots Cafe and Catering. And then we also had four alternates who participated fully in all of the listening sessions and discussion of the business meetings. And they include Stephanie Gaska, who is representing an employee organization, Organized Labor, excuse me, with Centro de Trabajadores Unidos en Lucha; Abdi Abdi Berman Kajin, who is an employer, his business is Afro Deli; Bruce Nustad, who is with the Minnesota Retailers Association, which is a business association; and finally, Sarah Webster Norton, she is an employee representative currently with Betty Danger's Country Club. And again, we just really want to thank you. I wanted to take the opportunity to read through those lists of names because these folks have just done tremendous work. And then the last thank you that I want to give before we get into the report itself is to recognize that we also had a large number of city staff members who really committed an incredible amount of time to ensure that this partnership group was fully supported, had the accommodations that it needed and the resources that it needed to have good discussion. And I just want to mention, in particular, Muria Rivera, who is the deputy city coordinator; Casey Carl, our city clerk; Gretchen Musicant, who is our commissioner of health; David Rubidore, with the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department; and the group's facilitator, whose name is Luke Weisberg. But we also had many employees from, and here are just the departments, the city attorney's office, the city clerk's office, the civil rights department, CPED, health department, our intergovernmental relations department, and then many connected from the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department. So thank you for allowing me to spend this time to thank so many who have participated in the work that we're about to hear about today. And I also want to acknowledge that we have been joined by Mayor Hodges, who is here today. We've also been joined by a few more councilmembers, Councilmember Orsami, Councilmember Bender, and I think I mentioned everyone else. All right. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to our deputy city coordinator to give us some introduction, and then we will turn to hearing directly from the chair and vice chair of the Workplace Partnership Group.
Thank you very much. Good morning. My name is Muria Rivera Vandermeide, and I am the deputy city coordinator for the city of Minneapolis. As Council Vice President Glidden has indicated, this work has certainly, this group has been working hard over the past few months to put forward thoughtful recommendations concerning earned sick time. When we convened the group, we said we'd be pushing them hard and asking them to be present and to come to meetings, to be engaged and ready to listen to a variety of viewpoints on the topic. And I believe I speak on behalf of all the staff involved, that we could not have asked for more from this group. They came to the listening sessions, they came actively engaged in the work, and they certainly challenged us and each other to have thoughtful discussion on the elements of the policy that you're about to hear. What we all learned from this work is that it's complex and requires balance, that as we strive to protect those who often lack the ability to advocate for more protections, we also have to, at the same time, ensure that we're fostering a strong and thriving business environment. At the first business meeting, the group adopted operating principles and protocols that called for the selection of a chair and a vice chair. And so shortly, I'll turn over the presentation to Liz Doyle and Jim Rouda, who hold those respective positions for the group. But before I do, I want to echo the words of Council Vice President Glidden and echo a thanks to staff, including our trusty facilitator behind me, Luke Weisberg, and acknowledge the hard work they put in to support this effort. They were just as engaged and committed to the work as the partnership group, and it was critical and supporting to move this process forward in such a tight timeline. We heard on Monday, as this group cast their formal vote on the recommendations, how much this process and the interaction with staff has really opened their eyes to see how deeply committed staff are to serving the community. And I know that we know how valuable our staff is, but it's always nice to publicly lift up those efforts and to acknowledge the exemplary public service that our staff brings to the table each and every day. So with that, I'll hold you, I'll leave you with the presentation and invite Liz Doyle to come up. I'll ask that you hold questions, if possible, until the end so that they can get through their presentation, because I know it's going to generate a lot of conversation. Thank you.
Liz?
Thank you, Ms. Rivera Vandermeide, and welcome, Ms. Doyle.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to join you this morning and provide a report. I'll be joined with Jim Rouda, who will be covering some of the sides here to talk about the work we've done over the last number of weeks and few months, both hearing from people across the city about the issue of paid sick time and the deliberations that happened within the Workplace Partnership Group. So just to begin with sort of a-
And I just want to kind of ask our media folks, okay, here we are. We have the presentation now up for everyone to see.
Great. So just to begin with a sort of reminder of the overall problem that this group was trying to solve. So one being that we have over 100,000 people working in the city of Minneapolis that have no ability to take paid time off when they're sick. More than a third of the workers in Minneapolis work in industries where there's a particularly high public health risk exposure. That's healthcare, education, and food service and hospitality. So that's about a third of our workforce is working in those particular sectors. And those who don't have access to paid time off when they're ill are disproportionately low-wage workers, workers of color, workers who are not firmly or are tenuously attached to the labor market in the city. And it's because of these reasons that we're seeing over 20 cities and across the country that have chosen to enact paid sick days laws, paid sick laws, to address these problems. So just a reminder of the charge that was given to the Workplace Regulations Group from the council. It was three parts to that. So the first was to study the impact of policy proposals related to workplace regulations and considering the regional and cross-jurisdictional issues connected with that. The second was to engage the community, and we'll talk more about how we did that. And then finally, to report final policy proposals to the Committee of the Whole. The composition of our group, Councilmember Glidden went through the names, but again, we had 15 voting and four non-voting members, who really were a balance of employee and employer representatives from a variety of sectors across the city, including retail, restaurant, and healthcare. During an abbreviated period of a couple of weeks, we held 14 listening sessions across the city, with more than 500 people participating in those sessions. And then we held 11 business meetings that went through Monday of this week to deliberate, talk about the policy issues, talk about what we had heard from those listening sessions. This gives you kind of a picture of the breadth of the listening sessions that we did around the city and the kinds of constituencies that we were able to bring into that process. So as you'll see, there's a pretty wide range of sectors that engaged in the listening sessions: construction, manufacturing, franchise restaurants, healthcare organizations. We were able to reach to a variety of constituencies, too, in the Hmong community, Latino community, Native American community. We hosted public sessions that were just open to the public, both on the north side and the south side of Minneapolis. And so as you can see here, I think this was really a concerted effort to hear from a broad diversity of voices across Minneapolis, both employers, employees, other community groups, and community representatives, to talk about what this could look like for the city. I'll just talk about some of the key themes that we heard from those listening sessions. So no surprise, probably, the inability of employees to take paid time off really has very significant impact on both an individual's health and their family's health. "Do I work or do I eat?" was a commonly expressed sentiment, particularly when we heard from low-wage employees in the city who really can't afford to take a day off when they're ill if that day off is not paid. And so that's a really sort of common trade-off that low-wage employees in the city are facing. Do I go to work sick, or do I try to bypass those wages? And doing so can be really challenging for meeting their other basic family budget needs. It was also clear that there's some informal time off policies, mostly unpaid time off policies, that exist with some employers in the city. For the most part, it sounds like those are mostly for the individual, and one of the most common situations, needs that individual workers have is to take time off to care, for example, for example, a sick child. So some of those policies exist, but they're somewhat limited in how individuals can use them. We also heard a lot about the larger, what I would call like a ripple effect across Minneapolis of not having access to paid time off. So a story that we heard when we were at the public meeting in South Minneapolis was about a school social worker who works in Minneapolis Public Schools, who talked about the fact that she has children that come into the school every day, and from the moment they get off the bus, clearly they're sick, and clearly they should be home for the day. But that parent is unable to take the time off, so those children end up spending the day at the nurse's office. And the social worker often will be able to reach the parent, but the parent is unable to go and pick that child up from school, because they either can't take the time off at all, or they're unable to afford even taking a couple hours off to care for a sick child. We also heard from some individuals in the homeless community about how frequent it is for someone who is experiencing homelessness to talk about the fact that one of the triggers that ended, resulted in that individual being homeless was some kind of a health issue, where they were unable to take the time off that they needed and be able to hold on to their job. So it really sort of painted a picture, I think, of the implications for the city and for the well-being of Minneapolis residents and the economic vitality of the city really extend far beyond just that individual who needs access to time off. We also heard a lot about retaliation. So I think this is one issue that we'll, we've talked about in the recommendations, but it's very, very commonly stated, particularly among low-wage employees in the city, that they are concerned about taking time off could result in them losing a job, having their hours cut, other retaliatory measures against them. So it's a consideration as we look at constructing a policy and how to ensure that those employees are protected from retaliation. A few things that were pretty clear themes as we talked to employers. So one is there are employers across the city who have comprehensive paid time off policies, and it's in the interest of, I think, everyone to make sure that sick time ordinance here in Minneapolis respects and aligns with those comprehensive policies. We'll talk about a little more on that when we talk through the recommendations. Secondly, we heard about employers just wishing to minimize administrative burdens and administrative complexity for a earned sick time ordinance and have some protection against if there is misuse of earned sick time on the part of the employee. We also heard a lot from smaller employers, especially micro-employers, which we end up defining as one to three employees. Those smaller employers having, facing more difficulty covering costs and shifts and handling some of the administrative tracking issues, which is also something we ended up considering in the policy recommendations. So I think overall, this set of listening sessions left us with the ongoing challenge of how do we address the public health concerns and meet the needs of employees who do not have access to paid sick time, and doing that in a way that also minimizes administrative burdens and costs for employers. This is a detailed graphic here, but this was a very helpful tool that Luke, our facilitator, created to provide guidance for the, for the work groups tackling of the different policy issues. So it starts by naming what are our overall guiding objectives: improving public health, improving employee health and labor conditions, and also improving the business climate, where we can attract and retain good employees in Minneapolis. And then the second part of this lays out what are the topics that we tackled in order to construct those policy recommendations: scope of the policy, how the time may be used, how it would be accrued, how the individual earns that time, and how the policy would be monitored and evaluated going over time. So now I'm going to turn it over to our vice chair, Jim Rouda, to talk about each of those, at least the first three of those policy issues and the recommendations that we developed on them. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you. Save the best for the lawyer in the group, huh? So we organized our work into four categories: scope, usage, accrual mechanism, and then monitoring enforcement and implementation. This was, this was, this was really kind of the hard guts work. I think even though the, the listening sessions were, from a time standpoint, really hard, they were also so rewarding, because we were all different parts of the city, listening to great stories, you know, meeting all kinds of different people, and it was great to go through that. Then we had to come back and really roll up our sleeves and slog through these very, you know, difficult but very important issues in terms of how this might shape up. So with regard to scope, we could flip the, oh, thank you. Sorry, we have a facilitator. With regard to scope, we came to the, to the conclusion that all employees working in the city of Minneapolis should be covered, as long as they, they work at least 80 hours in a year for a given employer, to be covered by this policy. We also came to the conclusion that employers are responsible for providing paid sick time to eligible employees regardless of the location of the employer. We spent quite a bit of time talking through these two points together. I, I think it reflects a balance of a lot of different viewpoints. There was a lot of research certainly provided to the group in terms of other existing ordinances throughout the country, and, but this is where a clear majority of the group settled on these two very important issues, which really had to be settled, we figured out early on before we started to tackle other issues, which I'll go through now. In terms of some accommodations that are very important to point out, micro-employers, we had a lot of discussion about small business in general, and then we separated that out into these two categories of micro-employers and small employers. So micro-employers are ones that have three or less covered employees, and we came to the balanced conclusion that they should be bound by the protections that are provided in whatever policy or ordinance the city council comes up with, but they should have the discretion about providing that leave as either paid or unpaid. One of the important issues there to point out would be that the protection against retaliation was deemed so important that it should apply to all employers regardless of size. With regard to small employers, a lot of discussion here, too, and again, with, I think, some benchmarks on other ordinances, looking at a number of 24 or fewer employees, that we settled on the accommodation that they should have at least an additional six months of time to implement the policy. And as you'll see later, that, that's based on an assumption that we would at least see a six-month period of time for all employers to implement, implement the policy after enactment of the ordinance. So now let's move on to usage. We, we really, I think there was a, there was a very strong sentiment here about being broader rather than narrow, and, and using a broad definition of family and household, which is, I think, we found consistent with most employers' practices. We also had some very specific discussion about how this should probably follow the definition found in the city of Minneapolis, Civil Service Rules with regard to definition of a family member. We also had a lot of conversation, and there was broad consensus about having a broad usage concept with regard to physical and mental illness, and also supportive of the concept that usage of sick time for safety leave would be important, consistent with Minnesota statute on that issue. With regard to, again, a good example of the balance that everybody was, was very cognizant of here, we had a lot of conversation about documentation in general, and there's, there's overwhelming, I think, information and opinion from the medical community that requiring documentation in general in these sick leave policies is not helpful, certainly for the, for the, for the healthcare community. It's not a good use of medical and hospital resources to have people coming to a medical facility to get a note because they were sick for one day. On the other hand, we also talked about abuse and, and the potential that some, some folks could engage in a clear pattern of abuse, and what would you do? And that would be the appropriate situation where an employer could require documentation. And then we also talked that, to keep it simple for employers and consistent with existing policies that employees would be able to use sick time in the increments consistent with their current business and payroll practice. For example, in the same way that you would use, if you could use vacation in certain increments, you would use the sick time in the same type of increments, depending on We thought it was important, and this is a good example of balance, again, employees should be, be able to earn the sick time when their employment begins, but on the other hand, they shouldn't be able to use it until 90 days of their employment has passed. I think this also addresses issues that were raised throughout the business and employer community with regard to the hiring of seasonal workers during holiday times, or summer workers during the summertime, also dealing with industries that experience high levels of turnover, so that you're not spending a lot of energy tracking and trying to administer a sick time practice for a lot of employees who just may not ever be availing themselves of that, of that sick time. Trying to focus the usage on the people that will use it more frequently and, as opposed to very occasionally. But there was a lot of conversation on this point, and I think it really did go after that balance aspect, trying to deal with all those different issues. And this is also something I think is very common in many of the other ordinances you see. The next point is extremely important. We clearly heard in listening sessions across the city from all sizes of employers that certain employers have developed sick leave and broader paid time off programs that they feel are generous and accommodate all the different types of needs that their employees need, in terms of in the greater concept of time off. And there was a big concern that something about this ordinance would upset those plans or make those plans, you know, obsolete. So after a lot of conversation and also doing some benchmarking with other ordinances, but, you know, quite frankly, really within our group, very strong consensus that, that existing employer policies will be in, should be deemed in compliance with whatever the ordinance is, as long as they offer the access and utilization of compensated leave at the same rate and amount, or greater, than the hours of leave provided by the ordinance, and also allow the employee to use the compensated leave for the same purposes. We had some good conversation also in this context about encouraging the city, city's ordinance, if passed, to take a more liberal approach in terms of how this is interpreted. We, we found in the listening sessions that these types of programs are varied. There, there's not just one size fits everybody. Everybody's come up with a variety of different types of programs. They're very proud of them. You hear from both their employees and their, and their, and the, and the owners or the employers, that they have a lot of energy and feel good about these plans, and they have a lot invested in these plans, and they just didn't want to seem disrupted. So we're hoping that, that for the most part, it would be the exception rather than the rule, that these existing plans can meet the requirements of this ordinance. So with regard to accrual mechanism, I'll tick these off fairly quickly. Paid sick time would be earned at the rate of one hour for every 30 hours worked. Employers would be allowed, though, annually to place a cap on that accrual rate at 48 hours. And then, from an overall standpoint- And then, from an overall standpoint, employees can carry over their accrued hours year to year for unused time, but they can only do that up to 80 hours total of accrued time. So essentially being able to bank up to 80 hours at any given time. Employers would not be required to pay out unused time upon termination of employment, and quite frankly, for some employers, you know, that's an important concept, and also even from a public health standpoint, there are dynamics where that might actually discourage the use of the sick time. So we just wanted to make clear that we didn't think the ordinance should require that payout. Certainly employers could choose to do that. And then we also talked about how do you account for exempt or salaried employees? Because typically, their hours are not tracked. So then the question was, well, then how would you deal with their accrual rate? And so we came up with the solution that if you're an exempt or salaried employee, you would generally be considered to work 40 hours a week for purposes of accrual unless there was just some clear evidence that you didn't do that. So again, the exception rather than the rule, is that they would automatically be considered working 40 hours a week. Liz is going to finish us up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rauter.
Okay, so to pick up the final piece of this, which is the enforcement and implementation, several concepts that came out of our conversation on that. So one is a broad education effort to help both employers and employees understand the implication of the policy, what it means for them, having a single point of contact within the city that employers and employees can both, can call in order to address issues that come up or get further clarity on what their responsibilities are or what they're eligible for. Explicit protection from retaliation, we talked about that already. Transparent notification, and there's more details in the actual recommendation, including written notice and workplace posting. An annual outcome evaluation reported to residents, businesses, employees, and other stakeholders to evaluate how the policy is going, how it's meeting its overall goals. An ongoing partnership approach that includes a stakeholder group that could review that policy and make recommendations over time if there's improvements that employees or employers or other community stakeholders are interested in. Compliance efforts that are consistent with the city practice. We spent some time looking at the Department of Civil Rights and the tools available to the Department of Civil Rights, so being able to have the sort of a full array of tools that the city currently has, as well as, or including, the ability to prevent licensees for contracting for services if that contractor has failed to comply with the ordinance. And finally, an enactment of the policy, being at least six months following its passage for employers overall, and then, as Jim had mentioned earlier, an additional six months for small employers. So a small employer would have a full year to implement the policy, and that's just to make sure that employers have both an understanding of what their responsibilities are and enough time to make system changes in order to meet the new requirements. There was a few supplemental recommendations we included in the report. These were other ideas that were outside of sort of the scope of a paid sick ordinance, strictly speaking, but that came out of the conversation, and so we wanted to include in the report. One is an effort around strengthening the city's efforts in supporting small businesses and their ability to start up in the city, grow and thrive in the city, and be able to navigate some of the city processes. A second one, there was some conversation and some interest that came out of the listening session, looking forward, looking into the future on a citywide payroll tax mechanism. It's obviously something that would require state legislative change, so it's not something that's immediately actionable, but was a concept that came out of listening session. Third, we did hear a lot from individuals who would be interested in using sick time for bereavement purposes, and so wanted to forward that idea for your consideration. And then finally, there's a fair number of nonprofit entities in the city whose funding is primarily through government funds, and so we wanted to recommend that perhaps the city could help lend some support to efforts to increase those reimbursement rates at the state level in order to provide more resources to those employers to be able to cover the costs of offering sick time that they may not offer right now. So I think, as a whole, we feel like these recommendations are a balanced approach that provide access to sick time for individuals who need it while also minimizing the administrative burdens on employers and really recognizing the diversity of the employer community in Minneapolis. And then thirdly, that it creates an ongoing partnership in the, for community stakeholders to, again, review that policy and identify areas for improvement going forward. Broad support for these recommendations. We voted on the recommendations on Monday. We had 13 individuals vote yes, one no, and one abstention. So we have a balance of employer and employee representatives that stood in strong support of these recommendations. So finally, we wanted to just thank the city council for creating this group and providing the opportunity for us to participate in it, and would encourage members of the council to adopt these recommendations as a policy framework as you move forward on a paid sick ordinance in Minneapolis. I want to echo the thanks given to both city residents, who came in large numbers to the listening sessions and offered feedback online and at those listening sessions, employees and business owners who participated in the effort, and then again, members of the Workplace Partnership Group and the very talented staff for the City of Minneapolis that put a lot of time and talent into this effort, and that was very much appreciated. We will stop there for questions. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for this report, and really appreciate the time that you took to walk us through both your process and some of the, I think, major categories of recommendations. I wanted to just kind of give a heads up to my council colleagues as well as to the partnership group, but clearly, the next steps are in the hands of the city council in terms of how to act and move forward, and there is some work in drafting a staff direction to put that in motion, and I think we will see that at this Friday's council meeting. So we are anticipating there will be a direction that essentially dictates how to move forward with some next steps. I wanted to open the floor to some questions, and I want to say too, this is your opportunity to my colleagues to ask, you know, what was some of the dialogue that helped arrive at the recommendations, because I know there was a lot, or to dig into topics that weren't addressed in the presentation itself. And I am on speaker management, although I'm kind of looking down the line here, and I see Councilmember Gordon, I'm not sure I see anybody else yet, and I have some questions. So, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President, and I really appreciate all the work that everybody did on this. It's great to get the report back, and congratulations, and you'll probably miss one another now that you don't get to see so much of each other. So we may have to call you back to help us. I did have a couple of questions. I was curious about any research that went into creating that micro, small business category and why the line was drawn. Was it at three or fewer? I know there had been some talk of 10, or depending on who you are, starting a business, it can feel micro for a pretty long time. And I was especially curious if it looked like there was a large jump at three, or if you did any kind of assessment on what are the smallest and midsize, if you could talk about that just a bit.
So I think we didn't have a report research on that number, but I think where that number came out of is a set of conversations with small employers, as well as the small employer representatives that were on the Workplace Partnership Group, in considering what is a number that feels that an employer may really struggle to fill a shift, or to be able to pay an individual for an unfilled shift. And so after a set of conversations on that, the one to three employees is the number that we felt was appropriate to both balance the needs of that small employer with wanting to be cautious to not increase that number such that it was detracting from the overall public health goals and overall worker well-being goals of an ordinance overall.
And that's one to three, part-time? Any hours? Is that correct?
Part-time, full-time wouldn't matter. It's really, they wouldn't be covered unless they worked, until they worked 80 hours in a year. So, I mean, on this issue, it was a little bit more art than science, and I think it was a number that appeared to be comfortable after a lot of conversation, and certainly, I mean, speaking for myself personally, deferring more to the smaller business representatives who are on the group. I don't know, is that fair to say? But it was, yeah, I can't tell you that this was one where there was a clear, good benchmark out there.
Okay, thank you. And I also had another question about contract employees and temp employees, and I'm guessing that they could be covered, because if they're a temp employee working for a temp company, then the temp company, even if they're not based in Minneapolis, would have to be providing those there. Then there's the independent contractor idea, and we seem to have more and more of those like entities, and the shared economy even opens things up there. What's the intention maybe of the group and the recommendation for how those people get covered?
So the intention was for the temp employee to be covered by their employer, which would be the temp agency. The intent on independent contractors, since that's a single individual, was to not cover, not require that individual to provide sick time to themselves. And that's where the language on the micro employer, instead of saying less than four employees, says one to three employees, that's intended to not include the independent contractor.
Okay. We had a good amount of discussion on that. I think one thing we didn't want to get into, that maybe fall into the trap of, was to start to come up with a separate, distinct definition of independent contractor, say, then employers might find, either at the Department of Labor, state, federal level, we had those kind of conversations. And also, though, there was some late conversation, and it's in the report, I believe on page 12, that at least addresses the issue of, this would be relevant in some situations, where contractors, their licensing to do work for the city could be affected if they were a repeat offender of, say, the ordinance, once it was passed. So we were trying, that was another way to deal with some of the concerns around this broader issue of temp agencies or contract employers.
Appreciate that. And then I just have one last question, which was about the bereavement issue. Curious about why you just didn't recommend that we include that. To me, that looks awfully close to a family leave and medical, I mean, it's something that's right in the same kind of wheelhouse or bailiwick, or whatever we want to call it. And I might be inclined to say the council maybe just wants to wrap that in there as well. So was there some controversy there, or was it just it was slightly outside of the scope we had asked you to look at?
I think there was just, there was not a full consensus around the table that it was within the scope. We were trying to be conscious of the scope of the charge we were given, so that's why we ended up putting it as a supplemental recommendation instead of as one of the core recommendations.
Fair to say, no controversy. And I also think there was fair to say that, at least through listening sessions, there's certainly plenty of bereavement policies in existence already, as well as, or policy, or broader time off policies that would provide that, but I don't think there was controversy that it should or should not be provided. I think Liz hits the point, is that we weren't clear if that was really within our scope. If you guys decide differently, I don't think that would create controversy amongst the people that were on the group.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just want to note, to allow enough dialogue and conversation, I'm going to suggest that we will take some questions and answers until about 11:15, that is 15 minutes later than we said we would start our park board presentation, but I think that that is okay. I want to make sure we have an opportunity to have some questions and answers on this really important presentation. And so that's a little heads up to my colleagues, as well as I know we have some park board people who have been here or arrived, although we did give heads up that we wouldn't start before 11 o'clock. So Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make a quick comment and then ask a quick question. I just want to say I'm so grateful for all the work that you put into this. I'm so impressed by the level of thought and careful consideration, the level of engagement. I think you've come up with a very balanced approach here, and it's going to be incredibly meaningful for the people of our city and overall public health. And so I want to thank you all so much for it. It really shows how hard you worked, and we are all grateful for that. My question for you is on the issue of employers who are not located in the city but have employees working in the city. Can you give me some thoughts on, or did you have a lot of discussion around enforcement and how that might occur for that, and whether the individual, if they work in Minneapolis only a very small, is it proportionate, the amount of time that they would earn to them being in the city, or just in general? If they're only in the city 10% of their time, would they still have full coverage, or would it only be proportionate to that amount of time that they're in?
Well, I don't believe there was any discussion about proportionate. Again, back to the 80 hours of work in the city of Minneapolis. We had a lot of discussion on this topic, it probably took up a considerable amount of time during the first couple of meaty business meetings. And again, I think it's an example of balance. I mean, we were definitely on this issue, looking at the aspects of a lot of different ordinances around the country. I think there's a lot of different examples about how they're exactly trying to get at this issue, and we do, I think we acknowledged in our discussions that there is an enforcement question that I'm not sure would have been productive for the Workplace Partnership Group to nail down itself, and realizing that that's probably going to be some work for a combination of the city attorney's office and whatever agency is going to enforce the ordinance. We also know, I think, that in some situations in other cities, this is an issue that is still being kind of perfected. Is that fair to say? So, I mean, a lot of attention to it. I don't know that there was a perfect answer for us to come to that would, you know, just solve all of the problems that conceivably could come up in that arena.
And I think I would just add that the, it was very intentional to name the scope as individuals working in the city as opposed to employers, for example, who are headquartered in the city. One, because that's a more clear connection to the public health implications, because those are the individuals that are serving food and providing healthcare services, et cetera, and also not to introduce a perverse incentive or unintended consequence to encourage employers to locate outside of the city. And then I think, as Jim mentioned, that 80-hour threshold is intended to consider individuals who work such infrequent shifts, or individuals who spend such a small amount of time working in the city, that it's a sort of the amount of time they would earn for that would not be enough to accrue meaningful leave, and so we didn't want the employer to have to track it as such a small number of hours. But apart from that, the intent is for covering individuals who, for the time that they work in the city, provided that that's more than 80 hours, and that's similar, as Jim mentioned, to how other cities have approached that issue.
Thank you. I think that context is very helpful and to know the intent as we move forward. So thank you again.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Given that we are short of time, I won't go into depth thanking all of you, but I do want to say seriously thank you. As it was formerly a disjointed process, you've provided quite a bit of cohesion that I think allowed this ordinance to move forward, and I must say, I really do like the overall conclusion, that one hour for every 30, the 48 per year, 80 in total. A couple of questions. The, so I believe it's an 80, it's 80 hours that brings you under coverage, and I just want to know a little bit about what was the thought process that went into arriving at that number? You've alluded to it a little bit already. I mean, what I'm seeing is, on the one hand, 80 hours isn't a lot, but on the other hand, if you're at 80 hours, you're only getting two hours worth of paid sick time, which wouldn't even give you a day. So what was the, I mean, I could actually make the argument both ways, is that it should be zero, and on the other hand, that it should be greater. So I was just wondering what your thought process was.
So I would say, again, I think the intent was around not requiring employers to track individuals who work such a small number of hours in the city, but it may just be burdensome to track that individual when the amount of time that individual is going to accrue is not going to be meaningful. 80 is a standard that we've seen in a lot of other cities, so we are also just taking into consideration, how do we take advantage of opportunities to align to other municipalities with an eye toward national employers, for example, and being able to have some similarities in what this looks like in different parts of the country. Okay, thank you.
75% of the, in the ordinances that we've looked at, had that number roughly.
Okay. Thanks. And I think the other consideration is, so it's really intended... And I think the other consideration is, so it's really intended for the very, for the individual picking up an occasional shift, or who's working a occasional amount of time in Minneapolis. The balancing consideration is not wanting to introduce a too long of a waiting period for an individual who's starting a job, to have to wait until that individual is able to start accruing time. And that's where going beyond an 80 hours, you know, which is essentially creates a two-week waiting period for a full-time employee, in addition to a three-month period in which an individual can accrue but not necessarily use their time. We wanted to not, you know, prolong, inadvertently prolong the amount of time that an individual would have before they can start both accruing and using their time.
The only thing I might add is, I think we also, at one point, talked about, you know, particularly amongst low-wage workers through listening sessions, realizing that it's very common for them to have more than one job. Maybe with even, within those, within each job, not having a lot of hours. But so, for that, I mean, so you bring up a question, I think you brought up as part of your question, if, if that's all you did, it's, you would only earn a very little bit of sick time anyway, but that, that little bit of sick time might add up and become a little bit more meaningful if you take into context they might have three jobs.
Fair point. Good point. And then, I, I know you said you really didn't address enforcement overall. Was there a, was there any discussion, not just of enforcement, of a violation of the underlying ordinance, but also retaliation for reporting a violation of the ordinance? And I guess maybe that's directed more to a counselor.
Well, no, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to give you the impression we didn't talk about enforcement.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm not saying you didn't. You said that was, you thought that that was going to be more addressed by the city later. I'm just, I'm just wondering what, what the, what the conversation was around.
Well, if, if you can appreciate, not everybody on the Workplace Partnership Group is an employment lawyer like myself.
Right.
So, I could, I would love to have that conversation in detail. I think a lot of folks there, you know, come from different walks of life, whether it's business or the jobs they work in. And I, I think that was one of those little rabbit holes that we could have burned two or three meetings, trying to get into the details of enforcement, and I'm not sure how productive it would have been for the, for the group in that setting.
Yep.
To try to merit, you know, to really get that kind of granularity on.
Then maybe we'll have a discussion, discussion offline. I'd love to.
Sure.
Love to figure it out, how to make it work.
And I would just maybe add, just to reference, and this is on page 11 of the document, the language that we ended up moving forward on this issue, that says the city's policy should explicitly state that employees are protected from retaliation in any form and exercising the rights provided under this policy.
Yeah.
And then there's balancing language in there for.
Right.
Situations of a misuse of the policy as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to make just a brief comment and then a question. So, first, I wanted to say that, well, thank you as well, but, but both in this process, but also even in the previous iteration of the engagement that we had done last year on this issue, we heard loud and clear from the business community, a need for there to be more support for businesses, particularly our small and local businesses in the city. And I just wanted to say that I have heard that loud and clear. I know that all of us have heard that message, and I really appreciated the extra initiative that many members of the group took to not only voice that, but to go farther and start to put together some concrete proposals that I've seen and I know have been in front of, I think, the mayor and council president and other council members, so we can start to, start to take some concrete action, to really put into action, you know, the strong support that we all feel for, especially our small and local businesses. The question I had was, it seems to me that a lot of the decisions that were recommended by the partnership group kind of err toward the side of consistency across business sizes and types. And I wondered if you could talk about that, maybe in particular, on the accrual rate question, which was one that we had discussed previously about potentially having tiers of accrual for different business sizes. And this recommendation landed on having a consistent number across businesses. That's maybe one example of many. And could you talk through that, how that conversation went, and how you landed at, for example, the six days of accrual across business sizes?
So, we did have a series of conversations on that exact issue. And I think we landed on a simple standard, partly because of valuing simplicity. I think that from both the perspective of perhaps maybe both employers, employees, and the city, we saw a value in employees understanding what they're eligible for, regardless of which employer they're in, they work for, and regardless of the size of that employer. I think from employer perspective, we saw a value in the simplicity of knowing what their responsibilities were, and not having that change if they were to hire an additional employee, or change if they were to let go an employee. We also just had in mind the ability of the city to administer something efficiently and effectively, and thought there would be a value in not having to invest resources in evaluating the size of employer and coming up with measurements for that, and dealing with some of the complications around how you would measure an individual's workforce, and how to deal with changes in the size of a, the size of a workforce. So, I think it really came out of an appreciation for the value of having something that both recognizes the diversity of the employer community in Minneapolis, and having some of the modifications, particularly for small employers that we talked about, but also seeing that just overall, something that is simpler will work best from a variety of perspectives.
Exactly. And I would just add two things. One, I think listening sessions, certainly from an anecdotal standpoint, told us that a lot of low-wage workers have two things in common. One, less access to sick leave in general, and tend to work for smaller or medium-sized employers in general. Now, it's not, not across the board, it's not 100%, but that, those were certainly two themes that came out anecdotally. So, then you have to think about, well, if you start to go down the, the path of tier, do you solve the problem as good as, as you might want to solve it, particularly from a public health standpoint? I think also, I remember hearing in discussions from, I mean, this was a very richly debated topic. And, you know, I remember hearing at times from small business representatives on the group, as well as people that represented the nonprofit community, that it was a struggle to balance that concern versus wanting to be, I'm trying to think of how Danny used to say it, as, you know, just as good of an employer as anybody else in the city, trying to, you know, we should all have the same standards on certain issues that are important. And I think it came down to the issue of also a recognition that this really gets at the heart of some of the equity issues that, that we see taking place in the city. And so, again, if you go down, it's not that the tiering concept hasn't been done in some other communities, and it's not that it's not valid, but you, you, you do pay a price for that, too. And it's, and again, we came to this balance, so.
All right. So, we have three more people with questions, and I'm hopeful we can get through all three of those and still stay with kind of our stated objective of trying to take this to at least about 11:15. We will take just a short break, like a couple of minutes, to allow people, if they wish to leave, because they've been here for one item, and then there, I know there's a lot of people out there, and other people may want to come in. So, I just wanted to give that heads up. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, in my office, have made every attempt to be at each listening session and most of these policy meetings of your group, so I can certainly see how challenging a job it was at trying to synthesize a package here. Almost all of my concerns around this are reflective of small businesses. A couple of small points that I'm just wondering how consensus arrived, is one, I'm, I'm a little concerned about where you suggest is being able to withhold a license. Some of the most challenging abuses of worker labor in, in southwest Minneapolis is within the construction industry, and that's a really tricky thing. Whether independent contractors or subcontractors, is there been, has there been any discussion about how to coordinate this at levels where they can actually be controlled, like at the state level? I'm just curious if there's some person at the state in a labor department that can help to coordinate that between the city and the state level? So, that's one small question. The second is, a, a question at how the 90 days were arrived at, beginning to be able to use the sick time that you suggest. A, a small but important part of, something I've heard a lot about, but not one of your target audiences in the problem scope, is student workers. So, restaurant owners use, you know, seasonal summer student workers to do things like open up their patios or their outdoor dining options. And they want to be able to earn money from the first time school was out until they go back in the fall. This 90 days seems to kind of squeeze that a little bit tight. And so, was that, it seems a little narrow for that purpose. So, is this an exempt, is this an exemption consideration that you guys had a conversation about? Or is, is your consideration about how other populations of low-wage workers are affected here? Those are just kind of two of my brief questions.
Hold on, maybe first, to maybe, maybe start with your last point first. One thing to note is, an individual employee would accrue time during that 60-day period, but the employer wouldn't be required to provide them time off. And I think the intent of that really was to provide some flexibility for employers in situations of seasonal workers. It's clear that the employer, again, can provide the time, can give the individual that time off if they so choose. I wouldn't be surprised if we see employers who do decide to give that individual the time off, since they have earned the time. But I think that was intended to give some flexibility to employers on both seasonal employees and also individuals who may not stay in a position for very long. It was important for us to have that employee accruing the time, so that once that 90-day period is over, if that individual gets sick, they do have some time that they've earned in order to be able to use it. Let me ask on your first question. The question was, is there someone at the state level that a city employee could coordinate with on the, as it relates to contracts? Is that correct?
Pardon me. Well, not as it relates to contracts, but as it relates to being able to earn sick time, being able to withhold a license. Like, you spoke about being able to take away somebody's business license if they're a flagrant, you know.
Well, I, I'm not sure. I think the comment I made earlier about licensing might have been more with people licensing to do business with the city, and if they were repeat offenders of the ordinance, that might affect their ability to do business with the city.
Contracts the city holds with others.
Correct.
Got it.
That's correct. Yes. Okay.
Okay. That answers my question. My, the only last part, and I don't mean to take up a, a lot of time here, is, has there been discussion, because I wasn't there for it, about how these efforts will promote more adoption like this across the state, and ultimately change the course of this, you know, on the national landscape? Is it being discussed to coordinate and implement things similar now for our neighbors in St. Paul? Like, are you being asked as experts now to engage in their process? Because that is one of the larger goals here.
Right. Yeah, thank you. That's a good question. So, we have made clear in St. Paul that we are available as a resource to help support the conversation that's moving forward in St. Paul, and have already provided some assistance in the St. Paul conversation. I think that Minneapolis, moving forward with a framework, I think is very likely to encourage St. Paul to consider, this is my speculation, but that I think it's likely to encourage St. Paul to consider a similar approach, at least as you look at some of the core components, in order to have policies that align in both of those cities. Obviously, that will depend on the council members in, in St. Paul, the mayor in St. Paul, the members of the working group in St. Paul. But I think there's likely, they would likely see a value in looking at the path that Minneapolis is taking and thinking about opportunities to align for the purposes of having something that's not too different from both an employer and employee perspective on both sides of the river.
Thank you. Thank you. So, I have myself in queue, and I might just do one, I think, clarification on the last question, just because I think there was a little mixing up of terms. We were talking about a license, and then we were talking about a contract. And I think Councilmember Palmasano, and I've read the report, too, was asking a question about your recommendation that related to licenses, which is different than city contracts. So, it's still about a relationship with the city, but I just want to make that clarification, just because I think that's what was in your report. I had a question about the section in your report that talked about casual employees. So, this is a section where, in your report, you say that the Workplace Partnership Group's intention is that the council's action engages most employers and employees in Minneapolis to be in compliance without offering blanket exception, exemptions. That said, members acknowledge that there will be some challenge in considering how casual employees and others with unique employment arrangements should be treated. And then you recommend that we give particular consideration during implementation to accommodate those other than typical arrangements beyond what has been recommended here. So, I wanted to just understand those comments a little bit more, in part because I know that we have heard from those, and I, I will say, those I've heard from are in the healthcare industry about this. My understanding is that casual is not a term that is defined in law. This is more a term of art that is used in a particular industry to talk about a certain type of arrangement of how workers engage with the employer and, and their workplace arrangements. So, could you just give us a little bit more feedback on what you were intending with those comments?
Yeah, thank you. So, this was a, a conversation that was brought forward by the healthcare representative from Abbott, who is a member of our partnership group, to provide more information about the casual employees. I think we wanted to, at the end of the day, just kind of flag this issue for the council for further conversation. So, these are individuals who work less, who have ability, considerable control over their schedule, and whether they end up opting to work a shift or not, do not work a regular schedule, for the most part. As you look in other parts of the country, some of the cities have moved forward with covering casual employees, others have not. Some employers provide sick time to casual employers, others do not. I think to the point that you raised, the term casual is an industry-used term, but not a more broadly-defined term. So, we, I think we're challenged a little bit in an appropriate salute, appropriate approach to this that wasn't inadvertently overly broad, and wouldn't inadvertently sweep up other classifications of workers that we didn't intend to. So, that was an issue that was raised. We didn't reach a, a full, clear recommendation on it, so opted to flag it for the council to give further consideration.
The only thing I might add to that is that it could conceivably be addressed better on the enforcement side, based on the circumstances. I, I cannot understand why an enforcement agency could not, under the factual circumstances of, say, the use of casual employee in the healthcare industry, couldn't decline to pursue a violation of the ordinance if they saw facts that showed you were truly in this casual relationship, you have 100% ability to turn down a shift, take a shift, and somehow you would be coming forward trying to say, I'm, I'm owed sick leave under a certain set of circumstances? It's very complicated, and there's probably no perfect answer, but that's another approach that could solve that problem.
Thank you. We have one more question, and then we have, the mayor asked to make a brief comment. I'm going to ask if a staff person could maybe let folks know outside that we will have a definite break before we turn to the park board item, just so we kind of slow down on the doors opening and closing. We've had a very important report that's been presented to us by this group that has spent so much time, and I just want to make sure we're able to give them the respect of allowing their presentation without too many more interruptions. So, I just want to ask that privilege, please. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. You know, ask a couple of questions. The first one is just a very minor point, but did, did the chairs and vice chair just decide not to vote at the, in there? Because I mean, I certainly don't see your names on.
Oh, no. We voted.
Oh, you voted? Okay. Okay.
Pretty sure it was yes.
No, no, no. I'm looking at that. I'm not seeing your names up there.
Oh, okay. That's a mistake, if you're not seeing it on there.
Okay.
We did both vote, yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for asking.
All right. You know, the second question is in relationship to, I see, I see that Steve Kramer was the dissent. Could you generally summarize what was his dissent? And I know Mr. Kramer is here, and you know, you know, I certainly just want a short summary of that, if that's possible, and/or, you know, at some point, I mean, I guess we'll hear from Steve anyway.
Thank you. Yes, and I think the, Steve's opinion, I think, is, should be included with the background materials that that council member's received. So, at the risk of summarizing, I think, which obviously can read in more detail in what Steve has submitted, the approach that he brought, which is more of a voluntary system for employers in Minneapolis, we did discuss a few times at the Workplace Partnership Group. And at the end, the group as a whole felt that the approach that we laid forth in the recommendations was the one that was going to better overall meet the the overall goals that we had on improving public health, employee well-being, and a stronger business climate in Minneapolis. So, that was the decision reached by the group as a whole.
Thank you, and thank you for that question, Councilmember Yang. So I believe that we have dealt with the council member questions and comments, and, uh, Mayor Hodges is here, did you have a question or your comment? Go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much, um, Madam Vice President, for a time here to speak, uh, and I do want to give profound thanks to the entire group, um, particularly, um, to Liz and Jim for your very hard work as chair and vice chair, and, um, I want to thank you both, and Danny Schwartzman as my appointees, um, for the time and energy that you've put in in guiding the process, to Luke, to our staff, and to the council for your consideration and your, um, care for this. This is one of the most important policy considerations we will make together as a leadership team in our four years together. And, um, I, I think the report that's been brought forward has answered so many of the questions and, and spent, you, you all spent so much of the time needed to answer some very thorny questions, and I appreciate it. Uh, I think there's a lot of good that we can work with here. When I raised this issue in my state of the city almost a year ago, it's because there's a need, and, um, you have helped us answer how we can best meet that need, and, um, I appreciate it, and I look forward to working with folks moving forward to see where we can take it from here. It's been a great process, a community-based process, a lot of input, and I echo Vice President Glickens' thanks for, uh, to all the people who showed up, to all those listening groups, the people on the committee, and the residents and concerned and interested parties who showed up to really help inform, uh, this outcome and this result. It really is community-based, and I really do appreciate the time and energy you put in.
Thank you, and I'll just say again, thank you one more time, thank you for the presentation, thank you to so many of the Workplace Partnership, uh, members who have taken their time to be here for the entire presentation. I'll say on behalf of myself, I think that you have given us a great product, um, and I just want to, again, thank you for that. You have taken the time to vet out what I think were some different points of view on where this could go, and I just have to say, I think that is extremely helpful, and, uh, thank you for a very solid product, and, uh, we will be, uh, having a staff direction on Friday that articulates some next steps. So again, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we will take, thank you. And we will take a pause of just a couple minutes, uh, so that people can exit, and then more people can enter comfortably, and we also have some paper to pass out that relates to the park board.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do.
We've evaluated in our neighborhood parks, our golf courses, our fleet, parkway paving and lighting, and I T S. And when you look at the gap that we have for our capital needs in all of those areas, it's conservatively $140 million gap that we have. Eighty percent of that gap is solely in our neighborhood parks alone, $111 million. We also know that through our C I P, which is our Capital Improvements Plan, which is a five-year plan that looks at where we're going to make capital investments. The Capital Improvements Plan we have that takes us from 2016 to 2020, we know that that gap will grow by another 46 million during that period of time. And again, I'm just talking solely our neighborhood parks. We've been also able to project out to 2040 that if we do not change our funding stream for neighborhood parks, the gap between 2021 and 2040 will grow by another $304 million. So if you consolidated all that between 2000 and 2040, our neighborhood funding capital gap will be close to a half a billion dollars by 2040. This is a snapshot, and you actually have this in your packet that I gave you. This takes a look at our neighborhood parks by asset type, meaning each kind of asset we have in our neighborhood parks by category. What's in dark green is by asset type where we have made investments between 2000 and 2015 in capital only. Light green is what is scheduled to be spent in our Capital Improvements Plan between 2016 and 2020. And what is in red is the gap that we have. How we got this is we have a detailed inventory of every single one of our neighborhood parks and every asset we have in those neighborhood parks. We know when the asset was installed, we know the life cycle of each asset, we know the replacement cost of each asset, which is how we were able to come up with this information. So to the right of the bar chart, you will see numbers, and that is the gap in red for each asset type we have by 2020. And the total at the bottom is the $156 million gap we'll have by 2020 for capital investments. And then to the right of that, in the gray box, is again by asset type, what the gap will be by asset type by 2040, and then the total of almost a half a billion dollars by 2040. In addition to that, we have also done, we have 157 neighborhood parks, and of 100 of them, which are major neighborhood parks with rec centers, most of our assets, we've done what are called park fact sheets on every single neighborhood park in the system. This is simply one of those. I have provided to you in the packet that I've given you six different neighborhood parks, one in each park district of the city, so that you can get a sense of what the gap is for each of those parks. But we also have, all of our park fact sheets are posted on our website. To just walk you through this quickly, it obviously lists the name of the park, the address, has a map of Minneapolis to the right, so you can see where in Minneapolis that park is located. And then the boxes on the top, the far left, shows what the funding need is between 2000 and 2020. Again, this is capital only. Dark green shows what we spent between 2000 and 2015. Light green is what is scheduled to be spent based on our Capital Improvements Plan. And then the first box of red is what the gap capital-wise will be by 2020. And then the red box on the far right is what the gap will be for that park alone by 2040. To the left, the box on the left lists the major assets in the park. Anything in red indicates that we have already passed the life cycle of that asset. The top two pie charts show where we have made investments, the one on the left by asset type, the one on the right, it shows where the gaps are where we have not made investments. And then the bottom two pie charts show what the gap is by 2020 and what the gap will be by 2040 percent-wise. Two things to note is that the most significant investments we've made across our neighborhood parks have been in playgrounds and wading pools. And the reason is, is that both of those facilities have requirements that we have to meet, and if we do not meet them, we have to close those facilities down. The two assets that we are the furthest behind, again, citywide, is our athletic fields and our recreation centers. Another thing to note, in fact, I'm going to go back to this slide to show you, if you took all of this data through 2020, put it in a pie chart, by 2020, 70% of all of the assets in our neighborhood park will be beyond their life cycle. That's only four years away. This chart, also, we also have operating gaps in our neighborhood park system. So these are examples, six examples of maintenance activities we do in our neighborhood parks. What we've done is, I'll use mowing as an example, we've identified the activity. The quantity that we mow is just over 2,700 acres. Our current service level is that we are able to mow on an average of a 14-day mowing cycle. Obviously, late summer, early fall, 14 days isn't a problem, but I think everybody knows that in spring and early summer, mowing every 14 days is not enough. We should actually be on an average mowing cycle of 10 days. So what we have done is calculated both from equipment and staffing what it would take to get to a 10-day mowing cycle. And for mowing, we'd need an additional $875,000 a year to get to a 10-day mowing cycle. Just these six maintenance activities, and we have more, total up to an annual gap of close to $3 million. So let me talk a little bit about neighborhood parks. As we all know, in the state of Minnesota, we have neighborhood parks and regional parks. Regional parks are parks like Worth Park, the Mississippi River Gorge, Minnehaha Park, the Chain of Lakes. Those are destination parks. Nakoma's as well. Thank you, Councilmember Quincy. And they are larger in size, generally 100 acres or greater, and they have more natural features. Neighborhood parks are really the heart and soul parks of our city. They're embedded within the neighborhoods in Minneapolis. They are smaller, generally a block or smaller. However, Councilmember Quincy has one of our largest neighborhood parks, Pearl Park, in his district. They also, our neighborhood parks have the greatest number of physical assets. They have our rec centers, our wading pools, our playgrounds. Not that some of our regional parks don't have some of those. The reason why some of our neighborhood parks have those is because our system, the Minneapolis Park System, is older than the regional system. And when the regional system came into being, there is criteria by which certain amenities cannot be in regional parks. And because our system is older, our parks that had those assets were grandfathered in that are in the regional system. We know that our capital investments, again, going to the data and knowing how many assets we have, the life cycle of those assets, we know that from a capital perspective, investment perspective, we need $14.3 million a year, based on 2015 numbers, to meet annually our capital investment needs in our neighborhood parks. We also know that we have between $4 and $5 million annually to spend on our neighborhood parks. So we annually have a gap of at least $9.3 million that is growing every year, and we know that that started back at least in 2000. Our annual maintenance gap is a minimum of $3 million annually that we need to take care of our parks. So what we've done is, starting in May of last year through October, we held over 30 public meetings across the city to both share this information with the public, but also to get their feedback and input about priorities and their thoughts about how do we solve this problem. We also, in February of last year, conducted a citywide statistically valid survey of residents of Minneapolis, and there's some data that I'm going to share with you about that. We also looked at other park systems. We got a grant from the McKnight Foundation to look at 11 other cities across the country to see if they're coming up with solutions that we have not thought of. And we also, the Trust for Public Land, conducted a feasibility analysis to look at funding options for the park board to address these issues. I'm not going to go into great depth about our community engagement, but as you can see, we held a whole host of different kinds of community engagement, different ways to make sure we got input from youth, adults, people who are involved in our parks, people who are not involved in our parks, so that we understood really what the community wants to, has to say about parks. And we did it in collaboration with rec quests and our service area master plans, and both of those initiatives are looking to the future of our city in terms of recreation centers as well as amenities in our neighborhood parks. So in October of last year, I presented the Closing the Gap Investing in Neighborhood Parks report. That was the report that was the culmination of all of the public engagement we received in Minneapolis. The report includes findings on funding, programs and services, rec centers, outdoor facilities and assets, and maintenance and care. And around funding, with all the community engagement methods we had, there was overwhelming support for increase in property taxes to maintain the system we have. What I want to point out is that as part of the Morris Leatherman survey that they did, they also indicated that residents' responses revealed that judicious improvements or expansion would be seen as part of the greater maintenance effort. These are the results from the Morris Leatherman survey. The pie chart on the left shows that almost 80% of residents support or strongly support increase in property taxes to maintain our system. If you look at the pie chart on the right, they asked the same question about enhancing services, and the numbers are almost the reverse. So residents of Minneapolis want to make the investments needed to take care of the neighborhood system that we have. The other thing I presented to the board in October was the report on the public and private funding strategies for neighborhood parks. This is the report from looking at other cities across the country. Couple of key findings was that public financing was demonstrated consistently as the tool to address system-wide funding, that public-private partnerships and unique funding mechanisms really were only successful in cities to address individual parks or destination parks, or in our case, regional parks. And that's pretty consistent with what we do here as well. We have our parking system that generates revenue, but that's in the regional system. We have restaurants that generate revenue, those in our regional system. So really, what we found by looking at cities across the country is the way in which we're addressing and solving financial challenges is consistent with what's happening across the country. And finally, we presented the report from the Trust for Public Land, looking at our relationship with the city and financial options that we can look at relative to funding. And the two most significant and really viable options for us are to look at a levy and property tax increase that, as you know, would require city council approval, and it would be voter-approved. A levy would allow us to address both capital and operating challenges. The other alternative is a general obligation bond that, again, would require city council approval to do that. And the difference is, is that a general obligation bond can only be used for capital investments, so it will not be able to address the operating needs. Morris Leatherman survey, I talked a little bit about that. Again, that survey was done to ask a whole host of questions about the park system as well as the park board, and I shared with you the questions that were focused on revenue generating strategies. Since October, President Walensky and I, in particular, have been meeting with all of you, as well as county commissioners, the governor's office, our legislators at the state, so they understand the dilemma we're in and what we're trying to do to address this. And we're pursuing all options to get a referendum or a charter amendment on the ballot. The work that's been done actually since January is that in January of 2016, the Save the Minneapolis 501(c)(4), or the Citizens Group to support a referendum, was organized to help support a referendum for the November ballot. On January 6th of this year, our board passed a resolution, which you also have in your packet, really approving proposed ballot language for the November 16 ballot, as well as elements of an agreement with the city of Minneapolis to protect existing funding streams. I also presented to the board, which you have in your packet, is a programs initiative the first five years. It's really a framework about how we would make investments if a referendum were to pass. And I also let the board know that in April of this year, I will be presenting to them a draft, criteria-based rehabilitation and capital investment plan for the first five years of our referendum. In February of 2003, our board took action to override the mayor's veto that she did on the ballot language resolution. So our board, in February of 2016, overrode that veto of the mayor. On February 17th, the board passed action giving direction to me to pursue all avenues within the bounds of the law for a referendum or some initiative to be on the ballot of November 16. And then on March 2nd of 2016, I presented to the Charter Commission proposed language for a charter amendment to address the funding needs. The Charter Commission, on March 2nd, following our discussion, voted to begin the public hearing process to consider a charter amendment, and they have already scheduled public hearings for March 29th, April 4th, and April 6th to begin that conversation. And the Save Minneapolis Parks 501(c)(4) group has just begun the process of getting formal endorsements, and they've received endorsements to date from the League of Women Voters of Minneapolis, the Minneapolis Parks Foundation, the Trust for Public Land, and Stonewall DFL. So today, I'm here actually to ask for your support for additional funding for neighborhood parks. And what I'd like to do now is walk you through the resolution that council members have before you.
So Superintendent Miller, I think before we do that, I just want to take a pause in case people have questions on sort of, what was your original proposal? Which is reflected in the first part of your presentation, and then we can turn to you walking us through
Perfect.
Your perspective on the proposed resolution, which I'll just note, for most council members is very fresh, and so there might be a lot of questions, and I think they won't all be for you.
Right.
They will be for a variety of people. And so Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There needs to be some way to estimate the budget needs. I appreciate the care that went into looking at each park. But is that funding programmed into a capital budget the way you would see in our existing five-year capital budget for parks or our public works capital budget? Or is it still an estimate that then would be programmed after the funding became available?
Currently, we have a capital, our Capital Improvements Plan is a five-year plan that is for our entire park system, regional and neighborhood parks. We go through the click process for our neighborhood parks, so yes, we propose those. But clearly, the fact that we are short close to $10 million a year, and really, the only annual dedicated amount that is for neighborhood parks is $2.5 million, our ability to program everything, it's unrealistic because we know there is no money to do it.
I think that's a reasonable response, but just to be clear, so my constituents or our constituents couldn't go through a list of capital, it's not like you have a capital budget that's detailed and $10 million short, and we're filling in the funding. We're proposing more funding that then would be programmed into the future.
That's correct. And Councilmember Bender, that is in April, I'm going to be presenting both a matrix by which it will be an objective matrix where decisions will be made about where funding should go. And I'll be proposing a very specific five-year plan for both capital and rehab. And the idea would be that obviously, if we get funding for addressing our capital needs, then we will obviously have a more robust neighborhood capital plan. And one of the challenges that we're faced with as we try to develop this plan is we have almost a 20-year backlog of needs in the system. And I can tell you, and I'm sure you hear it and all of you here, every neighborhood wants their park address first. And so we have some significant challenges trying to balance all of that out.
We share those challenges here, and maybe it leads to the next question I have, which is this slide 12 estimates an additional 5% levy increase to cover what I believe is about a 20% capital increase over the $2.5 million annually.
So what is slide five?
Slide 12 I have here, property tax impact.
Slide 12.
Oh, that's ours.
That's a different.
Okay. So then maybe the correct question for you is, have you estimated, so our staff has estimated a 5% levy increase that would be needed to support this. Is that consistent with what the park board has estimated? Have you estimated how much we will have to raise property taxes, assuming we're not funding?
5% is pretty consistent, yes.
And so what would happen if we, for example, decided collectively that we weren't able to support a 5% levy increase just for parks, given all of our other needs, including our streets, infrastructure needs? What would happen if you had half of that, like a 10% increase annually? Is there a tiered approach that we could take that would be more incremental over time to allow for us to, again, guard the need for us to not really significantly increase property taxes in one year, given all of our other needs?
We haven't gone down that, but if that was what ended up happening, we would have to figure something out. But again, I think Councilmember Bender and the rest of council, one of the things that's really important to know is that in less than five years, 70% of the assets in our entire neighborhood park system will be beyond their life cycle.
So I had a couple of questions, and then we have Councilmember Gordon, and then I think if that's all right.
Absolutely.
Others might pop in here. So first, I wanted just a refresher, you showed the slide where you talked about the resolution of the park board on the details of this referendum proposal. Can you just refresh me on how much you were seeking to raise per year? Because I know the new proposal's a little different than that.
Right.
And then also, had you articulated how that many would be spent in terms of broad categories or percentages, you know, on
Right.
Maintenance, capital, new spending, or new assets, or, you know,
Absolutely.
However you were doing that.
Great question, Councilmember Glidden, excuse me. You have, and I know the public does not have that, but in the packet I gave you, you have Resolution 2016-112. And if you go to page two of that, at the bottom, is actually the ballot language that our board approved, and it speaks specifically to a 0.0388% increase based on the estimated market value of the city per year for 20 years. So that, I think, addresses
So what does that amount to? So what's the money?
That equates to a little over $15 million a year. And for an average property owner in Minneapolis, which a house is valued at about $190,000, that's a little less than $66 a year. In terms of how we would spend the money, you also have in your packet, and let me, you have a sheet that looks like this. And that is the programs and initiatives first five years, and it is the framework by which we would be making decisions about how to allocate the money. And it's three categories, maintain our system, which gets to the operating side, the mowing, tree trimming, building maintenance, and then rehab, and then replace and invest, which is in actually the capital investments. You'll see that the biggest amount of resources are in the invest category. And the reason that is, is that our assets are so far behind that we have to replace many of them. But what we have to juggle is balancing out the rehab and the invest categories, they play off each other, that as we determine what we would be prioritizing to spend in the invest category, where we would most likely be replacing assets, is that because we still have a number of assets that are falling apart, we have to make significant rehab investments in order for those assets to kind of hold on until they can get to year 10, 15, or 20, when we can actually do the replace and invest.
So I just have two more questions. One is, again, another point of clarification, just because this is a question that I hear from constituents about what might be covered or what is anticipated to be covered, and I might be wrong too. But my understanding is this is talking about park board facilities and assets other than the recreation centers, which is what we call, you know, the building hosting any programming or the desk space and all those, your gym and stuff like that. I could be wrong in understanding that, so.
Yeah, Councilmember Glidden, again, a very good question. This covers every asset in our neighborhood parks, including recreation centers.
Okay, so it does cover the recreation
Yes, it does.
Centers.
Yes, it does.
Thank you. And then final question is, so this category on the replace and invest, again, it's the biggest category, but I think kind of going to that question that you did the polling on, which is about what do residents feel about enhancements or additions as opposed to making sure we're maintaining the world-class quality of our park system? How much were you anticipating would go into this category called Building the Future, which I think is about the new investments?
Well, actually, replace and investment, I'll just read through some of the language under the category, which is things like recognizing the service life of existing park assets, buildings, fields, playgrounds, and planning for their replacement, according to the Community Development Master Plan, which are the service area master plans. So we will be replacing assets because they're beyond their life cycle. We'll be implementing master plans for those neighborhood parks to repair and improve and place existing assets that the board has already approved, but we don't have the funding to do. We'll be focusing on, again, on approving service area master plans and existing parks in underserved areas of the city. So we will be replacing assets, but because they're at the end of their life cycle. But we will also be doing replacements, not one-for-one per se. For example, let me just make a good analogy. If you look at the demographics of the city today, compared to the demographics in the '70s or '80s, it's very different. We all acknowledge that. We have, in the '70s and '80s, we put a lot of ball fields, baseball fields. Many of those ball fields may need to get changed to soccer fields because of the population and the recreation needs of different neighborhoods in the city. So those will be new amenities, but they will replace existing amenities to meet the future demographics and the current demographics of the city. Another example, again, from our surveys, is our recreation centers. Many of them don't have air, most of them do not have air conditioning. Free run, day camps, and childcare programs there in the summer, and the internal temperature of those buildings in the summer often will hit 120 or 130 degrees. So we can't even use them. So putting in air conditioning is an enhancement, yes, but it is essential for us to deliver services. So those are two examples that talk about enhancements that I believe are consistent what the public has told us they want.
Okay. And I was just really trying to clarify, and thank you for those examples, was there a portion of this that was going to building the system? And I just say that because I know that the park board has several plans that kind of are about
Right.
That you partner on with the city
Right.
That are about building the system, you know, the riverfront work, your Halls Island proposal, other things, and this would not be about funding those types of things.
Correct.
I just wanted clarity, so.
Councilmember Glidden, really good questions, and those are questions we get. This is about our neighborhood system
Okay, thank you.
Which is really built out, the only area of the city that I would say that the neighborhood system is not built out, and that is downtown. And I think Councilmember Frye Goodman can attest to that, given all of the residents that are now beginning to live downtown. That will be a future challenge we have to face. But this is all based on our existing neighborhood system only. And River First and Halls Island are part of the regional system and would not at all be addressed in this. Thank you for that clarity. Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. And these might be over simple questions, this is a lot of information turned together. There was one slide that had the feasibility report from the Trust for Public Land, and it mentioned there were two possible referendums that we could go for, and I just want to get clarity if there's any legal dispute about the issue. I thought there was some idea that we could only go forward with a general obligation bond that would have to be tied to capital improvements. We actually can't go forward with a referendum that would cover operational expenses. So is there, are all our attorneys all in alignment on this, or is there some controversy?
Councilmember Gordon, again, another great question. No, all the attorneys are not in alignment about that. And I can tell you that the Trust for Public Land attorneys, who do these kind of referendums all over the country and legally look at things, as well as our attorney, Council Rice, believe that state statute allows us to do a referendum for operating in capital. The city attorney disagrees with that and believes that we could only do a general obligation bond.
Okay, so I just wanted to raise that up.
Absolutely, great question.
And confirm my memory was correct. Then I am also curious about the capital improvements, whether it's through the referendum or another alternative. Would they still go through our standard click process where they'd be reviewed, there'd be a five-year plan, just like all the other city investments?
Councilmember Gordon, absolutely. We would continue that same public engagement and review process.
All right, thank you.
So we've had questions on that portion, so if you're able to move forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Glidden. And so, again, because I know this is fresh for your eyes, it's fresh for our board, and it's fresh for the public, I wanted to take the opportunity to walk you through the resolution that's before you, because there is a lot of detail in that resolution. And this is a 20-year neighborhood park plan between the city of Minneapolis and the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board. And this resolution recognizes that parks and open spaces have been a shared community and civic value. And then it recognizes that the park system constitutes one of the most cherished and defining features of what is Minneapolis. It also recognizes that with the leadership of the park board and the support from the city of Minneapolis, parks have developed in this community over six generations to serve the public's need for parks and recreation. And that, in that time, Minneapolis parks have been repeatedly recognized nationally as one of the very best systems in the United States. And it also recognizes that the park board has identified significant financial gaps for necessary maintenance, rehabilitation, and capital improvements to the Minneapolis neighborhood park system. By working in partnership through this resolution, it is our belief that we have developed a 20-year financial plan to close that neighborhood park funding gap called the 20-year Neighborhood Park Plan. And we'd like to memorialize that plan in concurrent ordinances. The plan, as detailed in this resolution, will be set forth in concurrent ordinances ordinances adopted by both the city and the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board. The plan would be in effect for 20 years, from 2017 to 2036, and that the financial resources provided under the plan would be used exclusively to fund the Neighborhood Park System. In addition, the city would provide the park board with $1.5 million in startup funds by December 31 of 2016 to be invested in capital improvements to rehabilitation of and/or operating expenses related to the Neighborhood Park System. The city will recommend to the Board of Estim and Taxation an increase of our adopted, the park board's adopted base 2016 park and recreation tax levy amount of $52,583,000 by $3 million in 2017, and that equates to about a 1% property tax increase. The agreement also speaks to the park board and city council representatives that sit on the BET voting affirmatively for this increase, and that it would be the intent of these parties that this increase would remain in effect for the duration of the plan, that it will be used to increase funding for general operations of the Neighborhood Park System, and that it will not supplant other operations funding for the Neighborhood Park System. Also, beginning in 2017 and continuing for the term of the plan, the city will provide guaranteed minimum annual funding for rehabilitation and capital projects for Neighborhood Parks. The park board capital projects would be part of the city's annual five-year capital improvement program process, as Councilmember Gordon mentioned. The guaranteed minimum annual amount will be $10.5 million per year, the form of which has not been determined, but will be some combination of levy, cash, or bond proceeds, totally at the discretion of the city. One of the things, I also want to be clear, the $10.5 million includes what has historically been $2.5 million that we have received from the city for net debt bonding. So the increase for the city would be $8 million, not the full $10.5 million. The city and the park board will review and adjust the guaranteed minimum annual amount every five years, based on a mutually acceptable objective measure of inflationary costs and other salient factors, on or before December 15 of 2020, 2025, and 2030. Also, beginning in 2017 and continuing for the term of the plan, examples of mutually acceptable objective measures of inflationary costs and other salient factors will be set forth in the concurrent ordinances. The 2020, 2025, and 2030 adjustments will be approved by concurrent resolutions by the city and the park board. The 2020 adjustments will be for years 2022 through 2026. The 2025 adjustments will be for years 2027 through 2031. And the 2030 adjustments will be for years 2032 to 2036. Expenditures of the guaranteed minimum funding and future adjusted annual amounts will be under the sole control of the park board, and they must be used for Neighborhood Parks. The park board and the city acknowledge and agree that there also needs to be, for both organizations, the ability to address future unanticipated critical needs, such as natural disasters, diseases, acts of God, and exigent economic events, such as state-imposed levy limits, decreased market value for tax capacity purposes, changes in the state's property tax classification system, and other potentially impactful events. The ordinance will not preclude either agency from addressing these unanticipated critical needs or exigent economic events in managing their fiscal responsibilities. For any applicable year within the 20-year period of this plan, the city council may determine that the occurrence of an unanticipated critical need or exigent economic event prevents the city from maintaining the agreed-upon level of support to the park board for that applicable year. If so, if the city council makes that determination, and the amount of funding is less than the $10.5 million, or less than the subsequent approved adjusted amount, it must be set forth an amendment to the ordinance for that applicable year. Also, the park board will continue to receive what we have already agreed with the city, which is the 11.79% of the annual LGA funds that are awarded to the city each year, irrespective of this 20-year plan. The park board will continue to pay, as we do now, the city's administrative and benefit administration fees, with a mutually agreed-upon cost allocation methodology, at rates that are proportionate to the rates that the city applies its own operations, again, irrespective of the 20-year plan. The park board will also continue to retain its authority, as provided in the city charter and state law, to request a maximum property tax amount and rate from the Board of Estim and Taxation, and to adopt an annual property tax levy within the maximum set by the BET, again, irrespective of this 20-year plan. It is also understood and agreed that the city and the park board will pass similar resolutions, meaning the resolutions before you, supporting the 20-year plan, and the city and park board will be preparing 20-year Neighborhood Park Plan concurrent ordinances that are consistent with the resolutions approved. It is also understood and agreed that if adopted by both parties, the 20-year plan concurrent ordinances are intended for the duration of the plan to be a substitute for any levy referendum, charter amendments, or other ballot measures to provide additional funding to the park board outside of existing annual levy and capital budget processes. Provided, however, that if the city council consistently, at least three years, three consecutive years, exercises its right, under the ordinances, to significantly reduce or suspend rehabilitation and capital funding for the park board, the park board's obligation to not seek support from the public in the form of a referenda, charter amendment, or other ballot measure will no longer be binding, and neither party will then thereafter have to any further obligations under the plan if the park board so chooses to exercise its rights to go to the voters. Also, this resolution speaks to the fact that the park board and the city will consider these resolutions that approve the 20-year plan and directing staff to prepare concurrent ordinances pursuant to the normal timeframes for noticing, intent, introducing subject matter, and holding respective public hearings to implement the 20-year plan for city council final adoption by April 15 of this year, and by the park board by April 20 of this year. So I think that walks through the entire resolution, Councilmember Glidden. And I'm, again, I or council members are, I'm sure, able to answer any questions.
Ma'am, I'm just reading your end card here. Wow, okay. I was just looking at the timeline here. Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to see what questions there are, and I might ask first, just because the two authors are here, if Council President Johnson or Councilmember Goodman would maybe like to make some comments first, before we kind of go into questions and dialogue. So, okay, there's nodding, and I think Council President will take the floor, though.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate all the work that's been done on this concept. And I will tell you that I came to this realization and challenge with, I feel, a really hefty understanding of the needs of the park system. I served on the Metropolitan Parks and Open Space Commission for 18 years, representing the city of Minneapolis. And so I understand the distinctions between the regional park system and the local park system, neighborhood park system. And I, you know, very carefully watch the park board's budget. I will tell you, they probably, I watch it probably more carefully than they're happy with sometimes. But the park system is such an integral part of our city, and how we attract people here, keep people here, bring businesses here. And I just think it is really important for us, as a city, to understand that if we go off on referendum here and referendum there, that it is a really challenging way to govern. We are best served when there is an overall agreement about the expenditures made as a city. And it doesn't do us any good, I think, in the relationship that we have with the park system, to be on different paths. We are, right now, as Superintendent Miller talked about, you know, embarking on a complete redo of our riverfront, in the upper riverfront. And we need to be talking to each other, working together all the time, to understand what the financial challenges related to that, new, these new uses that will happen. And when we go off in different directions, we don't do that. We don't communicate, and that is a real problem for us. So I think we have had several budgets, you know, where we have talked about our capacity as a city. We had a presentation from Mr. Ablin to the Board of Estim and Taxation, I think to the Ways and Means Committee, actually, also, you know, about our net debt capacity, which is very good news for us as a city. We have reduced our indebtedness since I came on the council by an astounding number through very careful financial practices. And we have some capacity to be able to meet the needs of this really critical infrastructure within our city that people value so much. And so I, you know, Councilmember Goodman and I have talked about this. We have a challenge in keeping our overall levy to a rate that keeps us in proportion to the neighborhoods and the cities that surround us. That's important. And so, to me, the idea of having a 5% increase in our levy, plus whatever the city's going to do, was just more than I could swallow. And so I think this is a thoughtful way to look at how we meet the parks' needs across our city, and in a way that is long-term, and gives the park board assurance that we are serious about doing this, and then gives our citizens some sense that we are working together to meet the unmet needs in our city. So I welcome my colleague, Councilmember Goodman, to comment, but that's the impetus behind this.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Council President Johnson. My heart is pounding a mile a minute, and I can't remember the last time I spoke on this dais where I was actually nervous. And I think I'm nervous because I am so passionate about the potential outcome. I have had the opportunity to work on multimillion-dollar deals on behalf of the city. I've been involved in negotiating the theater buyout, the sale of five parking ramps for almost $100 million, the Target Center refinancing deal, the addition to the convention center, and numerous deals. But this one, for me, has the most historic significance, because what it does is, it says that despite the fact that we have this odd form of shared governance, we actually are moving forward towards the same goal. As the kind of person who focuses on community and economic development, other than safety and public safety, the one thing that draws people to live in our city and bring jobs to our city is this incredible park system that we have. And I don't need to tell my colleagues that, because they already know that. And so I see this, in many ways, as a community and economic development issue, as well as a historic partnership, to be able to work with the elected leaders at the park system to say, your concerns actually are our concerns. And we're not going to work the way the federal government is working, or even this presidential campaign is going. We're going to work together, because we know what the common goals are. So when Jane, and I hope I can refer to you as Jane, we've been meeting for five months now, so I feel fairly confident referring to you by your first name. When Jane gave a presentation in front of the city council in October, I literally left the presentation and raced into Council President Johnson's office and said, are we going to make the voters tell us to raise taxes? Or are we going to simply turn around and work out a deal with the park system that addresses a number of their critical issues in addition to the money-related issue? And Barb said to me, well, I don't know, I don't know how they feel about a deal. I came subsequently to find that they didn't think we could get a deal passed. And so they didn't even ask. And we thought, well, we need to be sitting down together and figuring out if there is some meeting of the minds. And that's what we've done over the past five months. I will note that this was not in some veil of secrecy. A number of people on this panel knew we were doing this, including council members Glidden and Quincy, who said it would be great if you could work something out. And we are trying to do just that. We are trying to show that the city's overall spending plan and taxing priority needs to be managed and governed. And that's what leadership is. Leadership is about making choices. And I really believe that after two years of work, study, community process, and community leadership, the park system has proven there's a need. They have proven that the community is willing to stand up and ask us to resolve this issue, and we are obligated, as leaders of the city, to do so. I disagree with the idea of pass the buck. Make them get a referendum, let the public tell them that they want to increase taxes 5%, but when we need money for anything else, if people are freaked out about the overall tax burden, we'll just say, well, the public said they had to have 5%. And the public said yes on the schools, and the public, we throw sewers on the agenda, and people are like, ah, we don't want to pay for sewers. Someone has to be in charge of the overall tax levy and making choices. And this isn't just like an issue that came up three weeks ago, and we sat down and pounded something out. As you can see through this resolution, there has been a lot of thoughtful negotiation. The mayor had suggested she was concerned with regard to giving them cart launch, with regard to attaching an increase to the overall growth of the tax base. We've addressed that issue. The park system, quite frankly, was panicked that we would pull the rug out from under them. This group of people probably won't be sitting here in year 18, and we want to make sure that we have a process that's in place to guarantee that that funding is there for a longer period of time. So I'm proud of the work we've done. I hope everyone will find a way in the next few weeks to support the concept. The second process, point of the process, will be to figure out how we, as a city council, will come up with the money that would be committed through the process. Council President Johnson and I are open to other suggestions. We've put forward, with the help of the park system, as well as staff from finance, the city coordinator's office, and the city attorney's office, a suggestion, but our suggestion isn't the only suggestion. There are many opportunities for us to make this happen, and I would urge us to do so, because in the end, this will be a historic step forward for our city, and we are obligated to show leadership and take it.
Thank you. And I want to say thank you, Councilmember Goodman and Council President Johnson, for taking a moment to kind of share your reflections and what were some of your intentions in trying to come up with a proposal that could be presented to the city council to try to see, do we have a meeting of the minds on how to address significant needs in our Minneapolis park system? Just one more, I wanted to just ask another question. There's a lineup of people with questions here. But Councilmember Goodman kind of alluded to the fact that there, she and Council President Johnson may have had an idea or a framework that they have worked through initially with, you know, how do you fund the numbers that are in this proposal? And my understanding, and I could be wrong, was that staff wasn't coming here prepared to present anything on a framework. And so I wanted to know if, again, this is just to ground us, either of you would like to share anything about how did you identify how this would be the number? And I'm assuming, of course, that people have some questions, but we're going to refer this to Ways and Means and other places where we traditionally have deeper dives into how to finance ideas, what are our financial policies, and all those things. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, looking at the city's budget, and unfortunately, we don't have our last quarter results yet, the performance of the city's funds for the last year, for 15, but I guess we're going to get that in the next cycle, or Finance is working on that right now. But, I mean, I have sat through 18 budgets here, and I think when we look at how we have considered our obligations going forward under current state law, we have room to look for this $8 million of capital that we will need to come up with. There are every-year calculations about what our general fund balance needs to be with regard to our operating budget. The bond houses tell us we need 17%. The bond houses tell us we need 17% of our operating budget for the next year in reserve in our general fund reserve. We've always maintained that. We've upped it as they've asked us to up it. This city is financially extremely well-managed, and I thank our finance staff for the great work that they've done. But in the size of the budget that the city has, we have a number of obligations and a number of revenues that we count that are not always, what would you call it? Under current state law, we're getting a certain number, dollar amount of local government aid. We hope that that number continues. Sometimes it doesn't, and that has gotten us in to some of the budget challenges that we've had over the years. We have had workout plans for our internal service funds that we used to get us out of the deep debt that we were in when Councilmember Goodman and I first came to office. We developed a workout plan that pledged money to buy down that debt, and we are through with that buy-down of the debt. Mr. Ablin made the great presentation. Right now, our net debt bonds, we are out 2.2 years on average with our net debt bonds. That means that we're practically paying cash for our capital expenditures, which is great. Great news, great news. Councilmember Goodman has worked very, very hard on getting us out of the percentage of our tax base that is in tax increment districts, and I forget the exact percentage. She could tell you because she's worked really hard on this. So I think we need to take advantage of the flexibility that we have within our existing resources, look for these dollars, prioritize these dollars. As Councilmember Goodman said, it's all a matter of choices. And we can choose to sell bonds if that makes sense in this low-interest environment. It makes sense to sell bonds. So I think we have an obligation as a city, through our existing work, you know, in our committees, to look very deeply at our budget and understand where the dollars are located, and then, again, make these choices and prioritize, in our opinion, this park need.
Okay. So I think just at the end of our time together, I will probably make a motion, and that requests a presentation, an initial presentation be prepared for the Ways and Means Committee that at least gets started on that conversation, because I think we need to have some public conversation about how would we be able to source this, and that's where the dialogue is going to come from. So. And I will just note, too, so we had staff come prepared to, and I think we still might do this, I think we want to take questions, there are several questions here, there may be others that are more about what was presented. And then our staff was prepared to present some background information that helps us understand the park board's initial proposals. I think that still might be valuable information because we haven't heard that before, and we'll kind of take the temperature of how much time we have, and we can post those prepared presentations online in the case that we're not able to get to them. One was a city attorney presentation on the park board's proposals relating to referendum and charter change. And the second one was a general finance presentation, again, more looking at the park board's original proposal. So Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a clarifying question about the difference between the two proposals. I just wanted to make sure I understood that in the original referendum proposal, there was a, what was the total ask for capital versus operating? And then does that include or not include the 2.5 million that normally comes through our click process? And then versus the?
So the total ask, yeah, Councilmember Bender, let me know if I don't answer a question, okay, or if I missed a part of it. Our original proposal that our board approved for ballot language was a 0.0388% increase, which equates to about $15 million, in that it covers both operating as well as capital. It does not include, it covers both the operating gap that we have, as well as the capital gap we have.
And did that, is that in addition to the 2.5 million?
That's in addition to the 2.5 million that we get.
So the total roughly is 17.5, if you're making an apples-to-apples comparison versus the 13.5 commitment?
Correct. One, Councilmember Bender, one thing I'd like to clarify is that in this past year, Clic made a recommendation to reduce our net debt bonding money. So we're not, and we had conversations with the mayor and Council President Johnson about that very issue, that we weren't going to challenge because it's in the out-years. It actually starts in 2018. So we are, while our proposal for a ballot initiative is of the 15 million, we're not confident that the net debt bonding of 2.5 is still there.
Gotcha.
Okay?
And then just, Madam Chair, I actually would appreciate the financial information. I have a number of questions about funding sources and what the annual increased levy is imagined to be for the park funding, as well as our streets funding that we had a presentation about at TPW a couple of cycles ago. I guess I just wanted to comment, too, that from my perspective, I think there's a compelling case for the needs for capital and operating expenses in our parks. When we do our annual budgeting, we set a levy, and then we match that to spending in accordance with our priorities. And we give our constituents months to give us feedback about the proposed budget and the proposed levy, and we're able to make those difficult decisions about how much funding do we give to our parks, versus our roads, versus our police, versus our fire. It is not typical for us to have a set-aside amount in our budget for a specific item that we have committed to in law. We don't have that for police or fire or streets, for example. And so a lot of my questions about the financial piece has to do with those inevitable trade-offs of either having to raise taxes in order to pay for this additional spending or to cut spending. And we're doing this outside of our normal budget process, so we aren't able to make those clear and transparent decisions about what we might be cutting or what property taxes our constituents might be expected to pay. So I have a lot of questions about what we might imagine that those decisions to look like in December of this year.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. So I'm curious about when we're expecting the park board to act on this resolution?
Councilmember Gordon, we are actually going to be presenting to this, to our board this evening, and asking them to vote on it. I can't speak to whether our board's going to vote on it this evening, but it is being presented to them this evening as an action item.
Okay, I appreciate that. And the opportunity for us to amend it or change it, or is there any flexibility with this? I mean, if the park board wants to change it or amend it, then we'll see something different coming back from them. And I'm just wondering how much you're counting on us not to tinker with anything.
Councilmember Gordon, I think Councilmember Goodman said she was looking for feedback and input. I will be curious, the conversation we had this evening with our board, if they want to tinker with it or offer some alternative suggestions. So I think it will be told by what our board does this evening and feedback that I get. And Councilmember Goodman has asked for any thoughts or suggestions from her colleagues as well.
Okay, so I appreciate that. I, you know, the part that makes me the most nervous is the 10.5 million per year. It's in Part 5 because it doesn't say where that funding's coming from. I was open and am open to the possibility of a referendum. That, I think, makes things really clear as well, although we've proven that, as a city with the help from the state, we can work our way around referendums that tell us what to do as well. But I'm also concerned about this because I think this would be something we can work around, and there is a big escape clause in there, too. I really appreciate all the work that's gone into it, though, and I'm open to an agreement without a referendum. I also see a referendum as a lot more work for the park board, for advocates, for everybody. And there's other things I'm sure people want to focus on during an election cycle and all of that. So it's, I don't want to be overly negative or overly positive either, because I think seeing the city work well with the parks is really critical, and the parks are such a resource that I think we all feel a sense of responsibility and obligation there. It's just challenging to think about, where does that 10.5 come from? I could imagine that we're going to have to increase the levy to come up with some of that, even if perhaps, or take on more debt. Then people should always be worried about, what aren't we going to be able to pay for because we're doing this? This actually makes me think of that great opportunity that we had with our sales tax that we had authority for, that now is going to be all tied up in another project we decided to fund. Maybe isn't, in my opinion, worthy as the parks. So I'll be curious to find out what are the options and what are the alternatives for that 10.5? That's a big commitment. That's a big commitment we're going to be making on future councils. That might mean other things don't happen. We have bridges, we have roads, we have streets, we have police departments, we have fire departments, we have needs, we have buildings that are outdated, we have capital needs, too. So this is a challenge. I'd feel better if I knew where that funding was coming from and what that would actually mean to those other needs and balancing that out. So that's something I'm going to be curious about and looking for in the next couple weeks ahead, because I understand we're not making a decision on this now, but we might be asked to take a vote on it two weeks from today. And maybe that's a question for the council vice president or anybody. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make a couple of comments about the referendum and then this other option. I know, and I think we all agree, that our park system is one of our best assets. It's why I chose to stay here and to raise a family after I was relocated many years ago. And yet, when I saw the original proposals, the original resolutions from the park board on a $300 million, 220-year referendum, it gave me probably the same heart attack that Lisa Goodman experienced. There's huge implications for taxpayers and for the city enterprise as a whole with a referendum. With 20 years and the resolution that was taken at the park board level, lots of things can change. As our mayor said when she vetoed it, lots of things can change. It's locked, it's an enshrined amount of money, and there's very little accountability. And that's not to say anything that there is mistrust of the people that are trying to govern this, the park board commissioners, but it is easy for referenda not to be spent as campaigned. For example, Stillwater was in the Star Tribune for a number of weeks on how there was a large school board referendum for the Stillwater schools, and people actively went and actively campaigned for it, assuming that their elementary schools wouldn't close, and then they found themselves in the situation that they closed a lot of schools. So without any mal-intent, it is very easy for referenda to not be spent as planned or as committed to through a campaign. Currently, the park board gets 18.3% of our levy, of our city's levy, plus local government aid, and then plus this referendum on top of it. To me, that was cause for pause. I try to stay cognizant of the total picture of taxpayers, and this is something, this alternative, this alternative resolution is something that looks out for them. I still have concerns. I have concerns, can our park board spend it? You know, I see $7.7 million sitting in Clic that should have been spent on other city priorities and other city projects. I have, I too have concerns about school referenda, about our aging infrastructure. A referendum bypasses our city's ability to account for all things, and it gives zero commitment to our neighborhood parks instead of the shifting of money that I've seen over the past few years to try and deal with other needs that are pressing needs in our park system, but other needs like golf courses in other cities. I feel strongly that a referendum or an alternative will either get us further apart as a city and a park board, or it will get us closer together. And I choose that closer-together option. 99.04% of the budget asks from our park board over the last 15 years have been approved. To me, that shows a good working relationship, something that we can agree on. Sometimes that wasn't from a mayor's budget, that was corrected by the Board of Investment and Taxation. Sometimes the council took it out and other people put it back in. But to me, that's the right way to do it. And what I appreciate about all the closing the gap body of work that has happened is that they've finally been able to articulate their real need better than a lot of our city departments can help articulate their real need and their real value to the organization. And I disagree with the idea that we should take the politically popular parts of our whole city and put them up for a referendum vote, because that really does a disservice to other parts of our city that are more difficult to explain, to directly appreciate. A referendum might be perhaps politically expedient. It would be nice to say, oh, I didn't raise taxes, but I really think it would be unwise. It really doesn't look out for the total tax picture. So I really appreciate here that we've worked together. You know, Brad Born, who's my parks commissioner for the whole 13th ward, he was right in saying we should first ask the city for how much the parks really need. And he was right there when I wanted to poke 1,000 holes in this referendum. And he sat for hours, and he, we sat and we talked about it. I don't think that every detail in this is necessarily worked out. I still have concerns over whether the park system can spend it. But this resolution, this work effort that I've been a part of in small ways, addresses a lot of them. And ultimately, I think it's important that we have the same CFO, and we should be able to be able to work together and to look at the bigger picture here, so that there's no direct questions in this, but just a comment on this huge effort to say I'm supportive of alternatives to a referendum. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Pomisano. Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank the authors and everyone involved for bringing forward this draft resolution, and I look forward to the details coming out around funding in our Ways and Means Committee. But I have to say, I'm really excited about this overall. I think that, you know, when we know that there's a need in our parks, as my commissioner, Stephanie Musich, can attest to, when we have tennis courts that they need to send people out to weed whack, no joke, when we have ceiling tiles falling down in our parks buildings, we have a clear need here, and we have a world-class park system. And frankly, I think a lot of that, we're coasting on past investments that were made by the generations that come before us. And I'm looking forward to the investments that we can make in our park system that will be valued and appreciated and used, and that generations ahead of us will have gratitude for. I also recognize the needs around our roads and our other infrastructure, our public safety. You know, I'm not trying to solve every problem at once. I think it's hard to do that, and I think that we absolutely have a role in working on our road infrastructure during the upcoming budget process. But we know that if this went out on the ballot, that the voters would support it because our parks are so important to all of us. And I want to recognize that this is ultimately less money than the park board would receive if it went out onto the ballot. So in the grand scheme of things, in terms of roads, in terms of public safety, this is actually a step towards being able to provide more funding for those important needs as well in our city. And I don't want to rag on it too much, but I also know this week we had go-through and is up on our agenda for Friday, $130 million renovation of the Target Center, which would extend its life for 10 years. And I personally think that our parks are a far more important investment to make. And ultimately, at the end of the day, I think that, if anything, it's the Target Center that should be out on the ballot for a referendum. So not our parks, and I just want to acknowledge that. And so I am very excited about this. Again, thanks to everyone involved with it. Our parks absolutely need this. And, you know, politically, it might be easier if it was on the ballot, because then when, you know, we go out there in front of voters, it's easy to say, hey, I didn't support this tax increase, the voters did. They did it. I didn't take a hard vote to raise taxes at the end of the day. But I think that's not why we're here, is to avoid those issues. We're here to step up and show that leadership and say, this is a need, we recognize it, and we're going to do this. And at the end of the day, the residents of Minneapolis, I believe, will recognize the wisdom in coming together, compromising, and ultimately funding our parks the way that really reflects the value of the people of Minneapolis. And finally, I just want to bring forward a constituent question or more of a concern, and this is something I figure will work out in the details. They had emailed me saying that they absolutely love the parks on the South Side. I love the parks on the South Side as well. They spend, though, so much time in Northeast Minneapolis specifically, and they feel that there is a difference in the investments between the parks on the South Side and in Northeast. And they wanted to see the neighborhoods that have the greatest need receive the lion's share of those funds, of those investments, so that we can have strong parks in every single quadrant of our city that are equitable for all of our residents. And so if you have any response to that, Superintendent Miller, around how we can equitably... equitably, uh, source this money or invest this money, uh, that would be appreciated.
Uh, Councilmember Johnson, first of all, thank you for, uh, your comments. And, and in response to your question, uh, equity is really an important issue at the park board as well. And, um, as I mentioned, I will be presenting to the board, uh, in April, uh, proposed or draft capital and rehab plan for the first five years. And I talked about it as being based on a criteria-based, uh, matrix. And we are still working through that, but let me give you, I can give everyone a sense of what those criteria are going to be looking at. They're going to be looking at areas of concentrated poverty within the city. They're going to be looking at, uh, areas of higher proportion of people of color, going to be looking at population density, they're going to be looking at the youth population. Again, all of these are relative to the neighborhood parks. Historical capital investment, if you look at the value of the assets in a park, what has been a proportionality of spending within each of those neighborhood parks. We're also going to be looking at safety in that neighborhood and crime. Um, and then obviously the asset longevity of the assets, the condition of the assets, um, as well as, uh, being in compliance or implementing, uh, improvements that address ADA compliance.
Absolutely. Thank you, I appreciate that. And again, thanks to everyone involved with bringing this forward. And thanks to everyone who showed up today as well in support of our parks. For each one of you that's here, I know there are hundreds more, uh, at home and are probably not even aware of the meeting today, but if they were, uh, they would be out here as well because they value our parks so much. Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. My presence in the city right now is in no small part a product of our beautiful park system. In 2006, I ran the Twin Cities Marathon. Uh, it spans a series of lakes, it goes through a, a ton of different parks in, in south Minneapolis, and I quite frankly found it beautiful. And I, and this is, this is a dead-on true story. Uh, somewhere around the 10-mile mark or so, uh, my friend Scott D. Phillips turned to me and he said, this is a beautiful city. That's an exact quote. Uh, and I, you know, I couldn't agree more. Now thankfully, uh, the Twin Cities Marathon runs predominantly through the parks in south Minneapolis and not necessarily north Minneapolis or northeast, which certainly need, uh, some more funding as well, but I know that, uh, Jane is, is working on that extensively right now. And secondly, this is, this is an equity issue. There are studies that prove, that definitively show that you can predict the likelihood of having a heart attack by the age of 60, or your, your earning power throughout your life based on the proximity that you are to green space. Not just any green space, green space that is well-kept, uh, that is, is taken care of and that people feel comfortable and safe in. Uh, and so ensuring that we have parks throughout the entire city that are well-funded, I think is critical to this. Uh, and then finally, the, um, I'm going to make an argument as to, as that many of others have, have already made, as to why the, with the referendum, which is quite a blunt instrument, especially at a definitive $15 million figure that's tied to inflation, that is tied to a percentage of market share for the entire city, is not necessarily as good as forming an agreement. Now, I, and I know many others were not, but I was actually more amenable to a referendum because I saw this is such an important concept that we needed to tackle immediately. Uh, but I cannot tell you how much I appreciate the work of council members, uh, Johnson and Goodman, uh, as well as our park board, Ms. Miller, uh, that have, that has gone into this. Um, we've got, I mean, one, it, it's just less money, $4 million less, um, out of the city coffers. Two, as I stated earlier, it's not a blunt instrument. And three, we have exigent factors that give us an out if and when we need it. Uh, so I think the agreement is, it works, uh, it's functional, and, um, I'm really thankful for the work that went into this.
Thank you. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm under, I wondered if we might have, um, some questions for finance related to the costs of this proposal? And so I had questions about what we might estimate to be the annual levy increase for this, I guess it would be this new proposal, which is $13.5 million annually. So the resolution itself commits us to a 1% levy increase, but then I think it would be helpful to understand what's the capital cost.
And I, I might say, I, I know that there had been a couple of requests to make sure that we did the finance presentation. I don't know if you think that would be helpful in answering Councilmember Bender's question. I just, I know you, Ms. Christensen, so I know that you often go through big presentations briefly, so I just want to let people know the length probably depends on how many questions council members have and, and, but, uh, why don't you answer a question, but if it would help you to do your presentation as you had set up, that's, that's fine too.
Um, Vice President Glidden, Councilmember Bender, I was just going to suggest that it, that if I briefly go through the 14 slides that I've got-
Why don't you do that then?
-might actually answer some of your questions preemptively.
Let's, let's do that now. Okay.
All right. Uh, I apologize that some of the information that will be in this present, presentation is, um, now a little bit stale, given the new information, uh, uh, with the proposed resolution today. However, much of the information that was prepared, uh, to talk about the impact of the proposed, uh, referendum is still applicable to the proposal that was, um, brought before us today. Need an agenda? So as a reminder to, uh, members of the council, uh, the overall budget for the city and the park board, as well as all of our, um, operations, is funded from a variety of sources. Uh, the property tax levy is a significant piece of the overall funding picture for the city. The city's got a budget of about $1.3 billion. We've got a property tax levy of about $300 million. You'll see, per the, uh, slide in front of you, there's a lot of other places where the money comes from. The biggest factor, uh, are the charges, sales fees and permits. And those charges are largely associated with the regular utility bills that are paid by the residents and businesses in the city. So just to give you a little bit of context about, uh, the overall big financial picture, comes from a lot of places. It's also important to note that we are dependent to some degree on the state of Minnesota for the, uh, provision of local government aid or LGA, which supplements our levy for funding for both the city's operations as well as parks. As Superintendent Miller mentioned earlier, there is an agreement between the park board and the city to share in the provision of LGA. So again, when, uh, when we take a hit, the park board takes a hit. It's a proportional sharing. And the, uh, slide that you see before you shows that particularly in the years 2009 through, uh, 2014, that there's this inverse relationship between the years in which the LGA was cut or unallotted and our need to backfill, uh, with property taxes just to main, to retain and, um, provide the same level of services. So a little more context. This slide shows overall the, uh, property tax levy for the various functions and the various uses within the city from 2010 to 2016. The, um, city's general fund, which is the blue section on the bottom, you'll see that there's been, uh, with the increases in LGA and growth in the other non, uh, property tax revenues, that the city's overall levy for its general fund has actually decreased over time. The next section that you see on this slide is the, uh, kind of yucky green color that, um, is reflective of the, uh, amount of levy support that has been provided, uh, by the city, uh, to the park board, um, over that same period of time. So you see that the funding level for the, uh, property tax levy has been, um, maintained relatively stable for those years. So how else do we pay for, uh, activities in the city's general fund? Uh, we've got the non-tax resources. Sometimes we use some, uh, fund balance, as the council president, Johnson, indicated that we've, uh, been the beneficiaries of some very good economic times in the past couple of years, which, uh, does provide us with some, uh, resources that we can use on a one-time basis, generally not a recurring, uh, revenue source. And you'll see, um, reflected that in this chart as well, that, uh, we have projected some growth in the need for property tax increases in the city's general fund. This is part of what we call the five-year financial direction, which gives us, uh, a view into, uh, what our future needs may be, which we generally will take into consideration when we're making some of these bigger decisions. What, it, what happens with what we do today, how does that impact the future? And then to go back to a higher level, we can see that the city's general fund, uh, is projecting growth. There's also a projection of growth for the, uh, park levy, um, of about 4% ongoing. And there's really some relatively minor, um, adjustments and, uh, stable, uh, levies proposed in the future for some of the other activities that we see, including the city's bond redemption levy. So although we are, uh, anticipating over a 3% annual increase in the general fund levy and 4% for the parks, we're still looking at an overall, um, estimated future property tax annual increase somewhere in the 3%ths, uh, give or take. And, uh, sometimes it's a little easier to see how that looks over time, uh, in a chart. So you'll just, yes. Previous year? Certainly. Uh, this year's property tax levy, uh, adopted for '16 is 297.
The percentage.
As a percentage, the percentage increase was about 3.4%. And compared to the prior year, uh, was slightly less than, um, was less than 3%. It was closer to 2. And going forward, the-
I believe it's 2.4, then it was reduced to 2.2 by the city council.
Correct. So you'll see that the, um, the out-years, uh, despite some, um, uh, larger projections in the early years do kind of level off to be, uh, more reflective of what we anticipate inflation to be. But again, the longer we go out into the future on our projection, the less, uh, the less accurate it's going to be because situations change. So again, we'll be looking at this on an annual basis. It's kind of a rolling five-year projection. And again, uh, just to, uh, show in a picture what the, um, average, uh, about a 3.5% annual growth, uh, based upon the numbers that were reflected before. When we're looking at the annual budget process and looking at any proposals that, um, are of significant, uh, financial magnitude, we do, um, you as a council, uh, do consider, uh, the major funding needs and the, um, other, uh, competition, I guess, for the resources that are available. And again, we've, um, we're, today we're here talking about the neighborhood parks operating and capital needs. There's also been articulated needs related to paving and other, uh, related infrastructure. There's been needs articulated through the budget processes of facilities capital and maintenance, meaning the city's buildings. We've also talked about, uh, interest and concern about providing fund, ongoing funding for affordable housing, public safety, as well as some other, uh, interests with the, um, downtown comments. So getting back to the, um, now stale information about the, uh, proposed referendum, um, I showed you a slide earlier that showed the, um, average annual cost increase, uh, for the city's base budget or the city's base levy at 3.5%. That's the blue line you can see on the chart before you. Per the, um, the original, uh, resolution for the referendum to increase funding in the first year, 2018, I believe, there would be approximately, uh, $14 million increase in the base property tax levy. Now, it's important to note that the original proposal talked about, um, providing for funding that's .00388 of overall, um, market value, but on an annual basis, we would need to calculate what the actual dollar amount of that is. So don't get too hung up on what the, uh, the percentage is. We would be coming up with an annual dollar amount that would be, um, levied against the property in the city. So we've got in 2018, in this chart, reflection of about a $15 million increase. And after that big increase in 2018, which would show as about an 8.7% increase, we would go back to largely an annual increase reflecting, um, inflation. Because remember, once we increase the base, then anything on top of that is still just a percentage over the prior number. So we've been talking about what the, uh, the impact of, uh, making this base adjustment is. You really only see it in the first year, but you're going to feel it for every year after that because of what you, uh, what a taxpayer ends up paying. Now, um, as for a little more info-
We have, I'm sorry to interrupt. We have a question from Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, uh, actually based off of what you just said, in terms of people being able to feel it, obviously our tax base has grown. Do you have the last two years, uh, in terms of how fast our tax base has grown? And for the average homeowner, uh, my understanding is that for the majority of homeowners, the amount being paid has actually decreased. And so do we have projections of how rapidly the tax base might increase based off of current work with permits out there, all of that? And how ultimately this might be offset and what it ultimately might feel like to taxpayers?
Um, Vice President Glidden, uh, Councilmember Johnson, we have not done that degree of analysis, um, regarding the, um, overall impact to a particular piece of property. Largely, uh, the, um, the idea is that if the individual property's value increases at less than what the, um, increase in levy and tax capacity is, that they'll get a reduction. That's way more detail than we probably want to get into today, and I have not completed that analysis, and that can certainly be part of a, um, future discussion. But your, your question is very timely and interesting because included in this chart is, um, another line, the orange line, that is, uh, based upon the referendum, that would, uh, calculate a dollar amount based upon total market value. This is an estimate, assuming that the total market value of the city increases at 5% on an annual basis. So, uh, starting off, the, in 2018, per the proposal, the, um, referendum would bring in about $15 million. And if the ta, the values continued to grow at a rate of 5% per year through the duration of the proposal, they would be receiving about $36 million a year by the end of the, um, by the end of the proposal. So, um, that just gives some context as to, uh, comparing to what the, the new, uh, resolution brought forward today is. Um, you've got a potentially growing commitment versus what may be, um, a little more stable commitment.
Thank you.
Add one more question on this point, I, I believe from Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, to, to be very clear, in order to maintain our current city services and support this commitment, we would be increasing the levy by 8.7% in December of this year. Is that what this graph is showing?
Council Vice President Glidden, um, Councilmember Bender, that would, uh, largely, it would be a less number because again, this proposal was for, um, $15 million versus the, um, as I understand, the proposed resolution is somewhere around eight or some, uh, an increase of a lesser magnitude. And, um, so the, the percentage increase would be a number less than that.
Okay. Is there a more incremental way to raise this kinds of funds instead of seeing one large increase in one year?
Uh, Vice President Glidden, Councilmember Bender, there's, there's always the option to phase in any plan. Uh, we will, um, typically will do that when we know of an out-year obligation to identi, which is part of the reason why we tend to do this longer-term financial planning so that we can identify where we have the peaks and valleys and make, uh, make adjustments along the way so that we can mitigate a lot of these peaks and valleys in terms of, um, how it feels to the property taxpayer.
We have a couple more questions, uh, or comments. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to be clear, this is the proposal if a referendum went through.
Correct.
But the proposal that Council President Johnson and I have brought through have taught, has talked about a 1% increase and the remainder being paid out of existing cash balances, excess lev, excess, uh, debt payments that don't need to go in the full amount we've been collecting to those sources, correct? So this is kind of the, if the referendum went through. And I also want to note, this is just the city parks combined portion, which is about, what, 40% of the tax bill? And so you still have the county that routinely is raising now in the 3%, 4% range. The school district, the school referendum, and that's if everyone's property value stays where it is, but you're estimating the property values for assessment purposes are increasing at 5% per year. But we know in some wards for some types of property, those increases, like in the North Loop, for example, are at 50%. Or in Council President Johnson's ward on the north side, in excess of 15 to 20%. So everybody will feel it differently, uh, but almost 9% is still almost 9%.
Correct.
Okay. And I just want to kind of, uh, respond to Councilmember Goodman's, um, description of saying this is exactly where I, I think we want to go from here to a more fulsome presentation at the Ways and Means Committee to understand what is the proposal, what are the funds, uh, being identified? And are those ongoing funding sources or one-time? And then how do those, how do those items work together? So I think you're hearing a lot of folks who are very interested in how can we make this work-
this work together, but you need to just get that full financial package to understand that. So, and if the clerk's office could help me kind of check off the speakers up to Councilmember Goodman, and then Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. So I just want to be clear that this graph and this plan wouldn't include borrowing for all the capital improvements and paying down debt. And would that be another option for how we could then spread this out a little differently?
So it seems like that is a question that is in part, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, is your question, did you wish to ask a question of Council President Johnson and Councilmember Goodman? And then another question about kind of what's possible? Because I think Ms. Christensen is not presenting us with her perspective on what is the proposal that, I just want to make sure we're clear with who's the recipient of the question.
So it was for finance? So I just want to be clear about the graph. It was to be saying if we were going to be doing capital improvements, and this is at that, I guess, that 14 million or whatever level, so we know if it wasn't 14, it would be less if, let's say we didn't have these other revenue streams, which is a whole other issue, because I don't know what else we could do with those revenue streams if they are there, so I appreciate that. But let's say, we, I just wanted to be clear that this one way that might drive down this could be that we would borrow it, we would borrow money for the capital improvements, and then we'd just be paying for the debt, might actually stretch it out a little further.
Vice President Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, again, the information provided in this presentation is based solely upon the referendum proposal, which as a levy referendum would not provide for bonding. It would be annual cash collection through the annual property tax levy. So that's what's reflected on this chart. There are opportunities, likely with future discussion and when we've had more time to vet out the proposals, we can certainly bond, and then we incur interest payments and we're locked in for a longer period of time. So there are definitely some cost benefit analyses that would need to be completed where their interest in looking at doing an alternative mechanism for funding the capital needs. But again, I don't, anything would be speculation on my part as to how it would be impactful.
I appreciate that.
If you don't mind, Councilmember Gordon, just an additional piece, because if we have a referendum, and we know we have this ongoing revenue stream, there are options such as bonding future revenues. The challenge from a park perspective that I think's important for the council to understand is, we have an annual gap that we need to fund. And we could bond all this money upfront and do all the projects at once, or do them in a short period of time, but at the end of 20 years, we're going to be in the same place we are today. The issue is, we need to get on a regular rehab and capital investment schedule that is, takes proportionality of all of our assets and spends that money annually. Otherwise, those assets, if we do them all at once, will be in the same place we are today.
I understand, and I wasn't meaning to say we could do them all at once. I'm just worried that if we commit to the 10 million extra, or whatever it is, we're going to have to get the money from somewhere, and if it's getting, if it's taking from what might be current service levels and current things that we want to do because we're using some other revenue, we may have to end up raising more taxes anyway to cover those. So I was just curious about that.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I'm just, I still have not heard the funding sources that have been identified to cover the resolution, so maybe I missed that, so I wanted to ask that question. What are the specific funding sources that have been identified? And then I also wanted to ask that, as you mentioned, a staff direction that would be coming for Ways and Means, I think it would be helpful to understand from finance as well, the status of any unspent fund balances or other potential sources of funding that I'm hearing council members talk about. I thought we spent the balances that we had last year, but I could be wrong, and I'd be, I think it'd be very helpful to understand for that overall context of any unspent funding that we think is available for 20 years at about 13.5 million dollars a year.
So I'm hearing here some questions that may be for the authors again, on what are the proposed sources, so we can start to understand that, and then some more general questions that were for finance. So. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In looking at potential funding sources for the capital needs, the capital is obviously, that's the $8 million. I have looked at, we have existing obligations for our pensions, which we have overprogrammed for in our five-year budget based on current law. Now, that may change, those pension issues are very, very volatile, and we all know, reading the papers, longevity tables are being changed and challenged, and, you know, we will have a reckoning for our pension obligations. But based on our current budgeting, we have budgeted, I think, $7.9 million more than what our current obligation is for the monies that we send to the state for our police fire and Murphy obligations. The other potential source of funding for the extra capital dollars would be potentially, again, in 2017, based on current legislation, the legislature is going to take 40% of the debt that we are currently paying on our library bonds. We passed a general obligation library referendum, how many years ago, I can't even remember, that we have been, as part of our obligation with, our agreement with the county, we continue to pay the debt service on that general obligation debt for the downtown library and the community libraries. In 2017, the state of Minnesota is going to pick up 40% of that debt service based on current legislation. So I would put those two things out there as a potential. We also are having a proposal that will come, or excuse me, a response to a staff direction at our budget last fall about the revenues associated with tax increment districts that are being decertified in the next few years. That report will come to us, full information to all the council as to what those revenues will be, and then we'll make decisions about where those revenues go. We also have some flexibility in our, in my opinion, in our ongoing budgeting for debt service. We have currently about a $49 million backlog of projects that we have established debt service to cover. Now, what's happened is, and Park Board's part of it, we're part of it, you know, projects don't always get done exactly on time, but we have budgeted to cover those expenses. We have not issued those bonds because you don't issue bonds until you need to. So there is the ability to flex those dollars within our budget. So I think between potentially some from here, some from there, that we can come up with a viable financing plan for these capital needs for the Park Board. That's my opinion.
Councilmember Bender? Okay, okay, all right. Do you want to just continue?
Sure.
That is it?
Thank you. So we've had a couple of comments and questions regarding how the individual taxpayer may be impacted, and again, as Councilmember Goodman articulated, it's really pretty complex. It's hard to come up with an example that would say, well, this is what you're going to receive, this is how you're going to feel it, because every single piece of property is going to be a little bit different. It will depend on their, the change in their valuation, the property classification, if it's a homestead residential property, if it's commercial property, and then of course, the overall change in the tax capacity or the value of the properties within the city. So it's a little bit of an imperfect science, so to speak, but just a quick overview, the city levy is an actual dollar amount. We don't set a tax, we don't set a specific tax rate, we don't collect more money when the values in the city go up. We pick a number, that's what we adopt. And then the, that number that we adopt is then spread over each property's proportional capacity to pay or largely associated with their value as a piece of the overall property valuation pie. Wish I had a pie chart, that would be helpful. So largely, you'll see in the chart before you that we've got major property classifications, commercial, industrial, residential, apartment, and other. And you'll see that residential properties comprise about 63% of the overall market value of all the property in the city, but because of the property tax system that allows for some credits to be applied or exclusion of value, you see that even though the residential properties are 62% of the overall value, they're only going to be paying about 49% of the overall property taxes. So you see, it's a little bit complicated, and again, any change that's made in the individual property's value is going to impact what, how they're impacted.
So I'm going to just pause here because, Councilmember Goodman, did you want to ask a question? We have a comment. Okay. Okay, it was handled, thank you.
So in summary, so we have an adopted levy of about $297.6 million for 2016. Now, my information is just slightly different than Superintendent Miller, and I will explain those differences, but largely, we've concluded that the impact is about the same dollar amount on an individual piece of property. So we've got a median valued home for pay 16, which means it's the value as of 2015 of approximately $200,000. The city taxes, remember, everybody pays taxes to multiple jurisdictions, so the line item on the property tax statement associated for city taxes is about $1,129. For each percentage change in the property tax levy, and Councilmember Bender, I think this gets to your initial question, albeit the long way around to get there, that each additional change, each additional percentage increase in the property tax levy equates to about $3 million. And with the proposal as part of the referendum, again, prepared in response to that initial proposal, would be an approximately 5% levy increase, that was shown on that line chart that you saw earlier, and the additional city taxes with the approval of the referendum would be somewhere in the $60 range. So that's consistent with what the parks have proposed. So again, if you consider that every $3 million of increased need for levy is going to be the 1%, and that, let's see, for the median valued home, you're looking at probably $12 for each additional percentage increase.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Christensen. I will say that there have been a lot of references in this presentation as a whole to referendum, and so again, we had had our city attorney prepare a presentation with city attorney, you want to come up, questions on referendum and charter, change proposals, and just because there have been so many references to that, and this proposal is very fresh, I think that we should have that presentation again, I think it's short, just so that we have that, and then we can see if there are any remaining questions, and I think we're about to the end. I just want to say, I know that people have been dribbling out, and I know it's not because they're not interested, but this has gone on for a long time, so I just want to say again, thank you to everyone who took their time to be here, and of course, all the people connected with the, with the Park Board officially as staff and commissioners, thank you. So, Ms. Hamel.
Thank you, Chair Glidden, members of the committee. I'm going to quickly go through the Park Board's initiative and our initial legal analysis of that. So the Park Board's closing the gap initiative is what is calling for this dedicated funding to address their identified financial gap. And they've identified that for necessary maintenance, rehabilitation, and capital improvements. And in their proposal, they identified four avenues by which they, they believe they could pursue in order to close this gap and find the necessary funding that they need. One is through a charter amendment, and they've brought a proposal to the Charter Commission, and I'll address that later. They also have presented to this city council a resolution for a referendum. The third method would be a citizen petition for a referendum, and the fourth method would be to go to state legislature. I'm just going to talk about the two, the Charter Commission and the city council today. So on the request to city council, they wanted a special levy by voter referendum. And this resolution would, that they brought forward was to approve proposed ballot language for the November 2016 referendum on the November ballot. So it would request the city council to place the referendum on this fall's election ballot, which would impose a special levy of .388 of estimated market value of all property in the city to fund the capital improvements and to supplement their operating budget in and for neighborhood parks. This is that $15 million that Ms. Christensen was talking about. The resolution also called for this levy to be in addition to their normal funding, and the Park Board would seek agreement with the city then, they were directed to seek agreement with the city in order to protect the funding streams that they had and hold them harmless from reductions. Now, that particular resolution came before the city council, and it was vetoed by the mayor, and then the Park Board overrode that veto on the 3rd of February. So when you have a special levy by voter referendum, you have to have legal grounds in order to place the ballot question out there. And there's either specific charter authority that must be had or statutory authority. And these two methods have been examined by Attorney General Opinions, case law, and Minnesota statute. Now, our city charter has no provision for levy referendum. Okay? So because that option isn't there, we then need to look at statutory authority. And the statutory authority cited by the Park Board for the city to place this levy referendum on the ballot is Minnesota statute, section 275.73. Our analysis of this section and the other statutes surrounding it indicate that this is part of the 1997 law related to the state imposed levy limits. The levy limits are what the state imposed and said, you can't raise your levies more than this. But there's this release valve, and that release valve is 275.73, which would allow in certain situations for there to be a tax levy brought to the voters. And in our legal analysis, 275.73 is only permissible when the state has imposed the tax limit. Okay? So even when it is applicable, which in our opinion it isn't, any levy that was passed would still be subject to other law, other charter provisions on the amount of taxes that a local government could levy. Now, I do note that, that the trust for public land, you know, they issued their report that the Park Board has provided and cited, that initially in their report, I have the page here. I did have the page here. Oh, I do. On page 11, they initially indicated in that report that they issued in September, that the Park Board may not refer a taxing question to the ballot. That was their initial stance. Apparently now, they've issued a recent letter changing that opinion. So initially, the trust for public land agreed with the analysis of the city attorney's office on that issue. This also isn't a special levy under Minnesota statutes 275.70 subdivision 55, and that's when you have a referendum based on market value, and any levy that would be allowed would be required to be approved and ordered by city council. And, you know, we don't have those tax limits in place, but the actual resolution is presented to council, if it were to be had under 275.73, the language is incorrect in that it refers to estimated market value, and it needs to be levied against net tax capacity. And then again, 275.01 requires that a specific amount be stated in a ballot question for a levy. So those are some of our issues that we found with the proposal that came. are some of our issues that we found with the proposal that came to the city. Now, simultaneously, or very close in time, the park board also made a request to the Charter Commission. And in that request, they were requesting authorization to present to the voters on the November 2016 ballot, a proposed amendment to the Charter, Chapter 6.5. That's different than what was presented to council for a referendum. In this case, they're actually seeking a change to the charter that would includes their desired for the same, they want the same amendment that would have been presented to the taxpayers for referendum for a levy to be included now as part of the charter. So it would be a proposed charter change that the citizens would be voting on. And again, this proposed levy that would now be in our charter would be in addition to normal funding. And then they they still would have to continue to seek that agreement with the city to protect their funding from other reductions. Now, the Charter Commission has scheduled some public hearings on these matters. I've listed them here on the screen. And we are currently reviewing the question of whether or not the park board proposal is a proper subject matter for our charter. Because our charter is to for the organization of the city and its departments, and this is a funding source. So we are currently looking at that issue.
And I want to make sure, and I apologize for not doing, I should have written it down when I first thought. I apologize for not acknowledging. Barry Clegg is with us. He's chairing our Charter Commission. And so I want to thank you for being here. I know that the Charter Commission heard a presentation recently from the park board and and then went forward with their business of setting public hearings. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ms. Trammell, with regards to this NPRB charter proposal, let's say if the resolution that was talked about a little bit earlier goes through the council and goes through the park board, does this make this issue with the Charter Commission moot? And or will they? Let me just ask the moot part.
I think that's a question maybe for the park board themselves, because they're the ones who have asked for the action to be considered.
Yeah. Councilmember Yang, the intent is that if the resolution that's before you and our park board goes through and ordinances are drafted and approved by both bodies, we will cease moving forward with a referendum or a charter amendment.
Okay, well, you know, when I look at some of those dates that are set there, it those dates may come before, let's say, the votes of the council or the NPRB, you know, what what can be done in that situation to maybe push that back?
Again, Councilmember Yang, I would say that the reason those dates are in there is we have a we have a timed certain deadline by which, in order to get anything on the ballot, we have a timed certain deadline. And if we go through a charter amendment or go through a referendum, there's a lot of work that has to be done in order to meet that time deadline. And our hope is that we can come to a resolution on the resolution that's before both bodies and come to an agreement so that we can stop that work. But our conversations with Council President Johnson and Councilmember Goodman have been, we can't stop proceeding with either a charter amendment or referendum while if this resolution gets resolved or not, because we have a lot of work to do in order to put a referendum or a charter amendment on the on the election on the November ballot. So in our mind, the sooner we can resolve the resolution before you and that's going to our board tonight, the sooner we can stop all those other efforts.
Thank you. I have one more question from Ms. Trammell, I believe, which is, just can you refresh us on what was the authority for the library system? I thought that was voter approved something. So can you just remind me what that was about? Because I'm sure the public is thinking about that, too. And I want to make sure I'm understanding what happened with that or what was the authority for for that. This is how they funded their downtown library.
Chair Glenn.
And we can we can ask for that report back if you're not if you don't know right now.
Why? I'd like to clarify first. Are you talking about what that which happened in the 1950s?
No.
For funding? Okay, then I don't have an answer for you, but I could get back to.
Okay. So I think we might just at some other point ask for an update on that, just because I'm sure, well, anyway, I'll just say I'll ask for that. And that might be appropriate in a couple of different places, including our IGR committee, which often handles some questions about those type of issues and our governmental issues. All right. I actually had a couple of questions that I wanted to ask in relative terms, maybe, I don't know how important these are, but I think that these are for Superintendent Miller, and maybe also in part for the authors here. So we, yes. Okay. I'm asking right now, and you can decide if Council President Johnson can handle it. I'm sure that she can. All right. So here we go. My two questions are, I'm not understanding what is the implication of the timeline for a proposal to the City Council of when we would act. And so I think there was an anticipation that we would act on April 15, which is our full council meeting. And so I would like to hear what, why is that the timeline? My second question, just so I can look out and you all can decide what you want to do. My second question is, in relative terms, it's really small question, but what is the need for this $1.5 million in quote startup funds that you are asking for mid-year in this year? And that's just, again, it's another challenge that has to do with our normal budget processes. And I know that you have some unspent money as we do on capital projects. And I just didn't understand the purpose of that. So we might ask the other question first, if you want the authors to be part of answering, and you may want to answer. Do the authors want to answer anything on that?
Madam Chair, my thought, and Ms. Miller can correct me, but the park board, in order to rev up, to be able to expend capital dollars, is going to need more planning staff. They're going to need more staff to help them get the community engagement process in place, that sort of thing. And so this is out of our contingency fund. If memory serves me, at the end of third quarter last year, we had $4 million in our contingency fund, which is mostly used to fund snow emergencies. We had one snow emergency after that third quarter in December, which in, again, my math leaves us $3 million in our contingency fund, that we would split that in half with park board and allow them to staff up so that they have the capacity to get going on these projects.
Councilmember Glenn, just to add, yes, it is all what President Council President Johnson said, in addition to doing the work we need to do, lay out the projects and get rehab projects out to bid. Also, we'd have to buy additional equipment for maintenance. We have to buy hire more maintenance staff to do the maintenance side of it as well. So it's all of those pieces so that we're ready to go January 1st.
And what was the purpose of the timeline?
That I'm going to rely on Council President Gordon.
Is there some is there some timing thing that is driving that timeline? I just want to make sure I'm understanding our flexibility and being able to do our work. And 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 I noticed there was a pretty quick timeline. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding what your thought process was on that.
Madam Chair, I want to move forward as quickly as this on this as possible, because in the meantime, as Councilmember Yang pointed out, the park board is going down this road of trying to get a measure on the ballot. And this, one of the advantages of this particular choice is that they would receive dollars in 2017. If they go to the ballot, they're not going to get money until 2018. So it gives them an extra year, an advanced extra year. And I think we can eliminate some of this process if we move forward quickly with an agreement with the park board and eliminate some of this, these timeframes that are driven by the time it takes to get a measure on the ballot.
Okay. All right. That is helpful. So with that, I think I'm going to move to receive and file the various reports that have been presented to the City Council. So I'll just go ahead and move to receive and file. So we can get that done. All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And and the second thing I would like to do is, as I said I would before, I'm going to make a motion that we refer this to the next Ways and Means Committee meeting and have Councilmember Quincy help identify what might be the variety of information we're going to ask for. I think we might also want to just ask if Superintendent Miller might be available or her staff be available to be there as well. And we can, it's our, I don't have the date right in front of me. And as part of that report, we would want to review information that allows us to understand better the description from the Council President of proposed sources. And there may be other things to add to that list. I know Councilmember Goodman also mentioned fund balances, so that should probably add it to the list. We probably, just one more item, want to have a significant amount of time spent on understanding the capital program. And because there was some discussion of how that capital program could be adjusted to to meet some of the needs. So I'm going to rely on Councilmember Quincy to kind of, as a chair of that committee, he will be helping to follow up and make it clear what's the information that we're expecting staff to help present. And then I'm sure there will be questions Councilmembers are raising in between that also might help drive what's the information that allows us to do it. Our work is expeditiously as possible. Then I also wanted just the opportunity to make a comment. You know, we had a presentation from the superintendent, some, I can't remember how many months ago it was, to to the City Council when you said that you were raising the issue of a referendum, and then you were going to later ask your commissioners to vote on that as as an option. And I know at that time up here that we had some conversation about that, and people said, I think publicly that, you know, we hadn't quite made up our minds, but on is that a good option or not. But there was some discussion. And I know that I also was one who made a comment that it would be good for some folks to step forward to try to see what what could be done to arrive at a better proposal. So I do really want to thank Council President Johnson and Councilmember Goodman for stepping forward and meeting with the park board, trying to develop that relationship that would allow some proposal that was different from a referendum. And some of these things, I think, for some of us, including myself, it's legally challenging to think how we would be able to approve that based on information that we have about those options. But also, you know, as others have said, is that really the best option for thinking of how do we work together on our funding challenges? I do think that there are a number of things that we need to vet out and have good discussion of. And that's kind of our job as council members is to take proposal and then do our do our work. And if we think that there are challenges, we're going to have to, you know, raise them with the authors and see how we can resolve them. So I know that one other thing I just want to mention, because it's also been part of the public dialogue, is that we have had a very recent presentation on our street funding needs. And I know Councilmember Reich had to leave because he is on the tab. So he had another official obligation, but I know that he has been one who has been carefully watching over those challenges. And so we will want to kind of hear from him on it, really, this issue of balancing, needs that we know are very real, and how do we how do we think about that? So again, I just want to say thank you very much to the authors, and we're here to do our work together. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would actually like to offer an amendment to the motion, which is a staff direction. I just because of the very tight timeline, I have some specific questions that I just want to make sure are covered in that Ways and Means presentation. So I'd like to include direct finance staff to report back with the status of proposed capital sources, including but not limited to. So if other council members have questions, that would be covered as well. Projected end of year general fund balance, anticipated impact to our five-year financial direction, of any legislative action that we expect on our city's library referendum debt, a list of all capital projects for both cities and parks for which bonds have yet to be issued, the potential impact of decertification of TIF districts that were referenced during our 2016 budget process, the impact of anticipated pension obligation reductions to the five-year financial direction, and any other year-end projected fund balances that could be used to fund unspecified capital projects. And I'm happy to email that to the clerk.
I think that that would be, excuse me, this is really loud. How did I get so loud? Is it loud out there?
It's a new system.
Okay, anyway. Okay. All right. So I think Councilmember Bender, that's fine with those additions. I would advise you just to email staff. And again, I think staff want to be responsive to what are going to be questions. We don't want to not answer anyone's questions that they have. So I would encourage others who may not have questions that they're verbalizing right now to also forward their requests for information. Council President Johnson.
Just a question, Madam Chair. It's probably for the city clerk or, you know, I guess city clerk. Does the subject matter stay when we have a receive and file, does the subject matter stay in this committee, in committee the whole? I just don't want to have a hiccup where we're tied up in a committee.
Madam Chair, Council President Johnson, the subject matter for discussion here is about the proposed 20-year park plan, and that subject is being received and filed here. It's my understanding further that at the council meeting on Friday, a notice would be introduced that the authors of the resolution have requested in order to start the timeline that was referenced, that would bring forward final action on April 15. That notice simply provides the process to begin if we want to continue the journey to have presentations before the correct council committees about the actual proposal to get funding details, as you've outlined. And so the notice would go on Friday simply to start that process. It doesn't prevent the other actions that are being proposed here.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. But a resolution could come up, this is a resolution we have in front of us right now. We could walk it onto the council agenda on Friday, just like we do with every other resolution. We are not going to do that. We're actually wanting to wait a cycle. That's, I don't know if that was an agreement, but we thought out of respect, we would do that. But I do not want to be in a situation where we're informationing, studying, referring in the committee, getting to death. These guys have to have an answer about whether or not we can work out a project with that or a proposal with them or not. And if we can't, then they should get going on the referendum, and we should take into consideration what that would mean in terms of the overall tax base. So I'm expecting an up or down vote on this with within a month.
So thanks for sharing your expectations. Again, I don't think anybody's dragging their feet, but nobody's had financial information. I think we're just asking for that basic information that allows us to do our job. So and I think those process descriptions are exactly right. We have discretion on where to send things so that they go through our proper committee process. I'm going to make sure there's a couple more folks in queue that we get a chance to vote on the staff direction, which I don't think is controversy at all. So all in approval of the staff direction with the additional request by Councilmember Bender. In approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. And then we have Councilmember Palmasano, and then Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't want to belabor this, but I do just want to propose a suggestion. It's probably really a question for our city clerk. I understand this is a resolution that suggests that we work to draft an ordinance. Any ordinance would certainly have a public hearing in committee. I assume that would be Ways and Means, where there would be full presentations with lots of information. I just want to offer that it might be an alternative to agree that the council resolves to not go the direction of a referendum, and then allow all of those more detailed conversations, a little bit more time through an ordinance hearing instead. And it's just a comment. If I'm wrong with that, city clerk, please correct.
I might just, Councilmember Bender, and then I actually wanted to make a comment on that. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I asked a lot of questions today, so I just want to make a brief statement that, you know, I understand how important our parks are to my constituents. We're being told that we must support this deal because a referendum is threatened, and I'm not sure that we have clear legal information to make that decision. There is a significant $4 million difference in the amount of funding we're committing to, but there is no difference in the fact that we have to find the money somehow, either in raising taxes or in cutting spending. I care a lot about parks, but I also care about making sure we have police and fire services that are the levels that my constituents expect. I care about not creating a giant balloon payment for future city councils and taxpayers with deferred maintenance of our crumbling streets. I care about the investments that this council has been making in racial equity. I care about affordable housing. We've been increasing
I care about affordable housing. We've been increasing the amount of funding we put in our trust fund. And with all of that, I also need to guard my constituents whose property values are rising against an enormous one-time increase in their taxes, because I have a lot of constituents who are on fixed incomes. And this, of course, is shared across the city. So I just, I want to say that I'm actually a council member who might be one of the most willing to support a 5% or 7% levy increase in order to fund our parks. But we're not making those decisions at the same time. We're being asked to vote on committing funding without making the difficult decisions that we will need to make about either raising taxes or cutting spending in order to pay for that. And I just think that everyone in this room and all of my constituents who care deeply about parks, I know you care about these other things too. And so I think we should all be asking, where are we getting this funding? Are we raising taxes? Are we cutting spending? What spending will be cut? Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to make a comment because of Councilmember Palmasano's proposal. I guess I just have kind of a different view of this, which is that, I mean, I think it's fair for the park board to make sure they are keeping all options open before them until they get a final resolution on an alternative. So what we have right now is a proposal. I don't, you know, I'm hopeful that the timeline works, but I want to make sure I have full time to review it. And then I know there are some questions that intersect with what's happening at the legislature. So I think that's another good question about whether we should be sure of some things that kind of depend on what might happen at the session or not. And that's just, I think, a conversation for us to have. I think the park board should continue to do everything they need to do to make sure they have all options before them, knowing that you're hearing a lot of, I think, commitment to wanting to work on this proposal that has been presented to us. So that's my comment on that. We have, I think, the last word from Councilmember Andrew Johnson. And then I think we're going to close this portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is actually not about the parks. So this is, I wanted to make sure I at least put it in to get an announcement in there. So if we're done with that, if I could quick.
Then I think, let me just, let me just, I think we've received and filed, I just want to make sure I've done everything. We've received and filed, we voted on our staff direction. And so I think if we have our, I think we need to close out our last portions of the meeting. And I just want to say again, thank you for being here for such a long time, Superintendent Miller and President Walensky and all the other staff and supporters who wanted to make sure they were here for this important conversation. And you're free to leave as we finish up our meeting. We have on the agenda our reports from committees, but I think in note of the time, unless someone has a special request of an item they'd like to discuss, I might just leave it to our own ability to walk through the items. And with that, I think we're done, except for a announcement.
A very brief announcement, maybe if folks could quietly exit. Excellent. So in honor of Sunshine Week 2016, and as a signal of the city of Minneapolis's commitment to greater transparency and open access to government data, I'm pleased to announce this week the launch of the new Open Government Portal on the city's website. This portal brings together all of the public data and records currently available from the city into a single unified page. The Open Government Portal will provide users with quick, easier access to the tools and information they need to conduct business with the city, to be informed of current legislative activity, to manage information about themselves, and to ensure that government business is always conducted in an environment that is open and accountable to those which it serves. As we progress forward with our efforts towards open government, this portal will continue to evolve to include more tools, technology, and resources for engaging with city data. I want to especially give a big shout out to Grant Johnson within our IT department, who has been just a huge, oh, sorry, in our clerk's office, who has been just such a leader on this and is ultimately helping the city look so much better as a result of this effort and add value and resources for all residents. So big shout out to Grant Johnson, everyone who worked on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.